Hello, I'd like to call this meeting of Urbana City Council Committee of the Hall to order. Is everyone here? We don't have a quorum.
Yeah, you have a quorum.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Laut is out. Okay, Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, October 5th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Jared and seconded by Mary Alice. Are there any corrections? Okay, no corrections. Are there any additions? Okay. So clerk, will you please call the roll for approval?
Yes, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to additions to the agenda. And at this time, I'd like to say that there's going to be a change, not addition, but a change to the agenda, where we will have item 10 is going to be moved to be item number 12. Item number 11 will be moved to be item number 10. And item 12 will be moved to be item number 11. And also, Jared, you had texted me earlier regarding the resolution, item 13. I don't know if Alan wanted to speak during the regular public input, or if he wanted to introduce the resolution.
I imagine he'll want to do it when we get to the agenda item.
Okay, so that is also a change. Are there any more changes or additions to the agenda? Nope. Okay, so seeing no changes or further additions, would the clerk please call the roll for the acceptance of the changes? Are there any discussions or make a motion to, sorry, make a motion to accept the changes? Anybody want to make a motion to accept?
I can make a motion to accept the change in order of the items on the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that then. Dennis Roberts.
Okay, thank you Dennis and thank you Mary Alice. Any discussion regarding those changes? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. At this point is public input and presentations. And I'm going to read the instructions for public input. The city takes public comment via email, written format and verbally. On October 12th, 2020, the Urbana City Council approved new rules for public input during remote electronic meetings. These rules are listed on each agenda for city-sponsored public meetings. Members of the public may join meetings as either a Zoom webinar or telephone participant to make public verbal input. This is the time for committee members to listen to the public. Discussion, debate, or commentary will not take place during this period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person. Public input will total no more than one hour unless shortened or extended by majority vote of the members present. The meeting chair is the, has the option of giving priority to speakers who wish to comment on specific agenda items, upon which a vote will be taken. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole and maintain respect for the process and respect for members of council, city staff, and general public. The meeting chair or member of the public body has the authority to call speaker out of order for using abusive, harassing, threatening, or defamatory remarks. If the speaker refuses to cease the remarks, the meeting chair may mute the speaker's microphone and will ask the speaker to send the remainder of their remarks via email or inclusion in the meeting record. Thank you for helping us to conduct respectful and productive meetings. If at this point in time, if you wish to make a public, have public input, please raise your hand. Anyone that is considering speaking. I would appreciate if you do that right now so that we'll know how many people are planning on speaking. Thank you. I'll give everyone a few minutes. Well, a few seconds at least. We only have five people? Okay, I'll start with Mr., let me see if there's anyone else down the way here. Okay, I'll start with Mr. Kraft.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my comment is geared towards the agenda item called public comment. Again, I want to express my dissatisfaction on the council's approval of the new policy. It's too vague. You got, now you have different policy for electronic meetings than you have for in-person meetings. What are you gonna do when you have a hybrid meeting where some people are attending something for electronic? Your attorney talked about the use of calling someone corrupt or deceitful as being defamatory and is a crime. Well, my question is, who determines whether calling someone corrupt or deceitful is defamatory or a crime? I say that's up to the court, not to a public official that's subject to somebody calling them deceitful or corrupt, because the person saying that obviously believes that whoever they're saying is corrupt or deceitful is in fact corrupt and deceitful. I find it hard to believe that a public official, subject to the person's comment, is gonna make a decision better off left of the courts. The other part, I really wish you would rethink all this. I think it's gonna get you in trouble at some point or another. We talk at public meetings across the state and have talked in several different states. And one thing we find when, when public officials take it upon themselves to place more restrictions on the public speaking, pass new public comment rules, limiting, further limiting the time, making an attempt at limiting what people can say, and even alluding that people can't address individuals by name. They're wrong, and they're doing it for a reason. And the reason is because they're catching too much slack from the public. The public has a right to address public officials. And if the public officials don't want to subject themselves to criticism, well, guess what you can do? Slap your resignation on the table, walk out the door. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. One other thing I might want to add before I move on to the next person. If you are a telephone participant, if you wish to speak, or raise your hand by pressing star nine once. And when you are called on by the host or presiding officer, you must state your first name and last name for the meeting record, okay? All right, next is Christopher Hansen.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Christopher Hansen. I live in Urbana. I'm gonna speak some about the new public input rules. What you're doing is wrong, and it's very obviously wrong. The public has informed you of this pretty clearly. You still haven't actually defined or outlined abusive or harassing language in any way that would actually help anyone understand exactly what it means. And despite claiming that there have been many previous instances of this language, you haven't provided any specific examples. I don't understand why you wouldn't do that. Last week, Bill Brown, who mentioned to the public was the local ACLU president and is currently sitting on the ACLU Steering Committee. Bill Brown discussed how different presiding officers would have very different ways of enforcing the new speaking policies, which is hugely problematic in itself. Bill Brown seemed to be espousing this as a feature, and I'm just blown away that the ACLU is apparently endorsing this. I don't understand, again, also, how you're going to be determining defamation on the fly. You're not a judge and jury. That's not your function. You can't do that. We have William Colebrook sitting on the city council. He's a police officer. He's tasked and sworn to help enforce the law. Open Meetings Act violations are criminal infractions, and what you are doing in terms of content-based speech restrictions is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So I don't understand why we have someone who's sworn to enforce the law sitting there making every attempt and effort to help violate it and certainly violate its written intent. Last week, Dennis Roberts took issue with, you know, calling someone a liar, and that's a strong word. But there are situations when you look at someone's actions and you have to determine if they're either a liar, or incompetent, or grossly negligent. And that brings me to the issue of our city attorney, James Simon. The city council and the public have received a lot of terrible legal advice and claims from James Simon and we, and Kirk Borman. And we now know that, as a matter of fact, that it was bad advice, taking FOIA as an example, we now know affirmatively that James Simon and Kirk Borman engaged in and encouraged a number of illegal activities. It's not, it's not unclear. It's demonstrated through many, many records. So you eventually come to a point where you ask if someone is just grossly incompetent over and over, or if they're doing it all, you know, purposely, in which case they're a liar, and that also makes them corrupt. And so when it comes to your legal staff, James Simon and Kirk Borman, it's not a reach at all to make statements like that, because they're frequently encouraging and engaging in illegal activity. And, you know, I've read every PAC opinion in court case that James Simon cites in the new public input rules. And there's nothing in there that supports your speech restrictions, your content-based restrictions. It's quite the opposite, actually. Each of the three PAC opinions shows a violation on the part of the public body, and none of them espouse or allow any kind of content-based speech restrictions. Mr. Simon's citations are so, so bad and so negligent that, I mean, he uses a court case that predates the public speaking law in the Open Meetings Act. He uses a case where someone was removed from a meeting for bringing a gun into the meeting. He uses a case where someone was removed for threatening and yelling and throwing things at people. These don't, these things don't mimic or represent in any way what is happening at Urbana meetings. So I think Urbana really needs new legal staff. We're not headed in a good direction here, so I think you should get on top of that quickly before it really blows up on our faces. Thank you.
Hi, am I supposed to speak? Someone unmuted me.
Reese, you're muted.
You're unmuted. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, hi, I'm Tracy Chung from Urbana. Tonight, I'm going to comment on Urbana Police Chief Brian Seraphin's update to city council last week about Officer Ruff's rifle safety during the violent arrest of Aleah Lewis. During the arrest, the safety mechanism of the rifle was set to fire during the whole struggle. When this issue was brought up during the Hildad Heinz review, Deborah Kirby said that the team would look into it. Several weeks had passed, and I reminded city council that the public was still awaiting a response. Finally, last week, after more than a month, Chief Seraphin told city council that Hildad Heinz had kicked back the review of the gun safety mechanism to UPD because it was outside the scope of the initial review. Chief Seraphin mentioned that he has assigned UPD firearms staff to review it and/or assign remedial training. He then quickly pivoted away from the issue. Well, well, this is one of the most concerning parts of the arrest, and the firm that the city paid $20,000 of taxpayer payers money takes one month to say, whoops, you didn't pay us to do this. Well, it doesn't even make sense, though. If the claim is that Hildad Heinz was to conduct a sufficiency review of UPD's examination of the incident, how is it that Hildad Heinz did not find a problem with UPD not reviewing this particularly important aspect of the incident? I think this just shows that Hildad Heinz conducted a superficial $20,000 review and gave the city exactly what they wanted to hear. So just to be clear, each time any of you claim that a proper review was performed, that is a lie to the public. Now, the question is, if we will ever get a meaningful response, will UPD admit that the rifle safety mechanism was set to fire, creating a very dangerous situation? Again, let's be clear that UPD cannot respond to this by saying it was according to policy, because the Hildad Heinz report did say that the current policy is silent on the use of rifles during hands-on contact. Next, I would like to say that I'm in support of the resolution declaring continued utility disconnections in Illinois to be a pandemic safety risk. I would like to thank members of the public, especially Ellen Axelrod, on their tireless advocacy on this issue and for highlighting this crucial need in times of COVID-19. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I looked through the public input guidelines that were a result of the city's vote to censor public input. First, I would like to point out how discriminatory and tone deaf the city is in addressing the public. You use the word citizen to describe members of the public, effectively disregarding the huge population of non-citizens in Urbana-Champaign. Of course, this is not unexpected, as the city is known to use other discriminatory tactics against people who do not feel comfortable providing the city with the identification when it comes to public services, like making FOIA requests. Okay, back to the public input guidelines. Just a simple question. Have any of you bothered to look up and read what the court case is cited in the document is about? If you haven't, I suggest that you do so and come back and discuss if they make sense. Mayor Marlin, there are two scenarios. You are primarily responsible for the issuance of these guidelines. Did you research the court case that city attorney James Simon provided? If you did not, and blindly trust what's cited, that's a huge oversight in your leadership, isn't it? If you did read through the citations and understand those cases, I think that it's terrible that you think so lowly of the public to think that we would just blindly accept those citations, even though none of the citations support the new public input rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Deborah Liu?
Hello, my name is Deborah Liu. I am a resident of Urbana, Ward 3. I'm speaking tonight in support of agenda item number six, the resolution to adopt Vision Zero. I think everyone agrees that the amount of pedestrian and cyclist and other vulnerable, vulnerable road user death in Champagne County as a whole, and specifically Urbana, is completely unacceptable. One thing I would like to say specifically about Vision Zero is that I appreciate that Vision Zero emphasizes that it is the design of systems, not the changing the behavior of individuals. That is what actually causes cities to be able to eliminate vulnerable road user deaths. Every time something tragic happens, there's a lot of wasted energy in the public discourse spent on victim blaming and driver blaming, to be frank. This past week, very tragically, the community lost another cyclist. And it's hard not to spend a lot of your mental energy thinking about the details of the scenario. You know, what if the cyclist had been doing this? What if the driver had been doing that? But when we talk about these issues, we're missing the larger point, which was that the system that Williamsco was using was stacked against him. For every Shelley Taylor killed while walking in a crosswalk in broad daylight, there were 100 near miss incidences where there were nearly, where there was nearly a collision, where the driver almost hit the pedestrian, where the pedestrian stopped at the last moment, where the pedestrian yelled at the driver as they didn't yield to them in the crosswalk. There were 100 of those incidences for every, for every innocent life lost needlessly. Vision Zero allows us to think past individual behavior and design systems to protect people when the individual behavior fails. Oslo, Norway, which is cited in, I believe, the materials provided to the council when Vision Zero was first talked about, Oslo nearly eliminated deaths of vulnerable road users after vision, after adopting Vision Zero. And the question is, are Norwegians exceptionally careful drivers? Is there something exceptional about the city of Oslo? And the answer is no. You know, Norwegians are just people. They're subject to the same shortcomings that, you know, other people are. But the difference is that the city committed to designing their systems better to protect pedestrians and cyclists and other road, and other vulnerable road users. Urbana can do better. Urbana has to do better, and it starts with stopping the useless, useless wasted energy of talking about blaming individuals when terrible things happen. We have to design better systems. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, next is Michael Kil, I'm sorry, Kilkulen?
Yes, that's correct. Kilkulen.
Kilkulen. I'm sorry.
That's okay. But hello, everyone. It's been a while since I've talked with most of yous. I wanted to, my name is Michael Kilkulen and work with Sister Cities in Urbana, resident of Champagne, Urbana University areas. I want to speak in support of the Vision Zero program as well for transportation. I do run my own transportation consulting firm, and I strongly believe in all modes of transportation, which includes not just highways and automobiles, but also trains and planes and bikes. And I also want to emphasize that, especially around university campus, and in light of things such as this pandemic, that we're actually seeing a huge increase suddenly of micro mobility as well. This includes scooters, rollerblades, skateboards, and a lot of various apparatuses that have all kinds of names and similar type of operations, such as speeds of between 5 and 20 miles per hour and single width, no vehicle cage to protect them. You know, and we need to make sure that we also include micro mobility apparatuses along with bikes. It's not just bikes. It can be unicycles as well, or tricycles, so it's not just bikes. But it's all of these human-powered or e-assist type of vehicles that are small, designed for like one person, such as a bicycle. So I want to ensure that we include micro mobility, and we should even consider making sure that all policies and all names and word usages include micro mobility devices along with bicycles. As far as part of some of our issues, again, with last week of a doctor's death on the highway because he was riding his bicycle and a hit-and-run truck driver crashing into him, and other deaths this year and other years, and throughout the whole country and the world, we still emphasize that part of our issues really has to do with the three Es. It's about the engineering of the infrastructure. The engineering has not been done properly for bicycles and walkers and micro mobility devices, along with any own wheelchairs and canes and crutches and baby prams and all these things. There are issues with anyone that is not in a car, is not having equal transportation mobility when everything is put into the car, and the roads and the snow removal and everything for cars. So we also do have to do education. We need drivers of cars, as long as, as well as cyclists and pedestrians to learn more, to be more careful users around each other. But, and then we need the enforcement. We need the police to actually issue the correct tickets when someone is crashed into. And I saw the damn track as well, when people drove around to train gates and they'd get crashed into by one of our trains. And the enforcement is not there to reduce that over 500 people a year are killed by railroad crossings when there's lights and gates and laws and everything about it. So we need to really focus, though, on engineering in this Vision Zero, because we need to make sure that we cover costs and improve infrastructure for all users and want to ensure that we can create a task force to implement Vision Zero designs, including signage and engineering. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, next is Grace Wilkin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Grace Wilkin. I'm a resident of Urbana, and I would like to speak briefly today about item number 13 on the agenda about utility shut-offs, and encourage you to pass this resolution and seek ways to protect our community members from having their utilities shut off during the pandemic especially. And then also looking long-term and thinking about how to address or prevent people from accumulating utility debt during this time. So maybe urging to expand LIHEAP or other funding assistance programs so that people aren't stuck with this insurmountable utility debt once the pandemic is hopefully over someday. So I encourage you to pass this resolution to address the issue immediately and also look for longer-term assistance and solutions. That's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Okay, next is Drake Matieri. Once again, I ruined somebody's name. Can you?
Can anyone hear me? Have one hear me?
Yeah, can, can you state your last name? Because I think I murdered it.
Matier, Matier.
Here, thank you, sweetie. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it.
No, you're good.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Drake Matier. I'm a graduate senior at the University of Illinois, graduating, bachelor's of community health in the College of AHS. As a community health student, as an activist, and as a black man in Champagne, I am concerned about the well-being of the most vulnerable populations here in this county. And I'm speaking on the homeless population and our homeless brothers and sisters. We, as a society, have completely neglected people multiple times over and over again. However, we have the power, you all have the power, to really change the condition and change and be the example of a society that does for people. I know you all, I will, not you all, but I know that the powers that be don't like to give up a lot of power and give up a lot of resources for those who they deem less fortunate, but there are some things that we can do. This December, the CDC stated that we can see up to 2,900 dying every single day because of coronavirus and because of the deadly cold that is coming. People will be, homeless people will be dying, people without homes and people without utilities for the heat. Thank God, and thank you, Alan, again, for, for the presentation and doing the work with no Amber shut-off. But people will be dying if there is nothing done to ensure that people have a place to stay overnight, especially during these cold winter months during the coronavirus. especially during these cold winter months during the coronavirus. This is something that needs to be emergent. This is something that needs to be done. And this is an emergency, right? One thing that can be done for the city of Urbana, and I believe Champagne as well, in conjunction and cooperation with the university and MTD, that every single stop, there needs to be heaters. I mean, you all already have placed and removed so many benches. And so a lot of homeless people are left to only the bus stops with, you know, the, the barrier around it. But there needs to be some heated, heating lamps for homeless people. In reality, there needs to be homey, there needs to be homes and shelters for them in the first place, but I understand that unfortunately that we don't live in that type of society and I can't believe that housing is, for all, is considered a reach. But most of these schools also sit empty. If you are willing to open up and, and house people, ensure that people live during this December, you will open up and push, you will push the schools to open up, not for educational purpose, well, that too, but to ensure that people can live, people can sleep, people can thrive, especially live in heat during these times. This winter is about to be deadly. Game of Thrones said it best, winter is coming. And the winter that we have is not going to be nice to anyone. It definitely will not be nice to any of the vulnerable populations out here. We have the capabilities, we have the resources and the abilities to house and feed people. Even if, even if you all refuse to just open up apartment building complexes that you have, that they allow for students, there needs to be some way that these people, our homeless brothers and sisters are thought of, that are taken care of during these times. This is a must. This is a must. This is an emergency. This is a public health crisis. And I was told that majority of the people that seem to be walking in the call hospital with coronavirus are the homeless people. And we noticed that there was no social distancing and no, and proper, no proper PPE at homeless shelters here in Champagne. So I advise that you open up public facilities for people, for homeless people and other vulnerable populations so that you all won't have dead bodies on your hands this coming winter. Sorry to sound so grave, but this is a grave issue and this is serious. Thank you.
Thank you, Drake. And the last person that I see to speak is Megan McDonald. Go ahead, Megan.
Thanks, Shari. Hi, can you hear me? All right. My name's Megan McDonald. I'm from Ward Five. I don't have a lot prepared tonight, but I wanted to state my support for the calling for the utility protections as a public health crisis because, like so many people have said before me, it's going to be a cold winter. We don't know how long this coronavirus is going to last. And this is a very tangible way to show solidarity with the community and like, you know, as people are talking about the Vision One, like, and other vulnerable populations, like this is also, you know, vulnerable people that need your help. And it's, it's kind of, I don't know what the word is, but it's kind of nice to see everything kind of come full circle with, with so many different topics being spoken about tonight and public input. I see a lot of intersectionality happening, like talking about how we need systemic changes in infrastructure, in how we reallocate resources for housing. And I, I really, like last, was that last week or the week before when we were talking about giving money to like local businesses or with the Visit Champagne County website, I really hope that you remember and who, I think it was Lena that spoke on, that people aren't going to have money to go to these local businesses or to go out if they don't have their water on, if they don't have their electric on. What else? You have a relationship with the governor in some capacity. I know that the mayor already asked for him to extend, extend the rent moratorium. So I don't know why this wouldn't get passed as well. What, speaking on to what Drake said, how there are no masks in homeless shelters in Champagne, there's, there's no homeless shelter in Urbana, which I find really sad. And I find it, talking about Vision Ones again, like it's all connected because people, if people had more accessible ways to travel, then people, more people would be able to get tested at the mall, right? And then we would have a more accurate number of what our COVID positivity or negativity case rate is. But a lot of people can't even get to the free testing site because it's off the highway. It's off the interstate. And obviously, we know it's not safe to bike or use other micro ways of transportation in Champagne, Urbana. You're always hearing about a biker or a pedestrian being killed. There was somebody killed two blocks away from me. I have to see the memorial every, every time I go to downtown Urbana. And nothing's being changed. There's being Green Street Realty apartments being built in Ward Five, but there's no crosswalk being built across the street to get to the Lincoln Square Mall or get to the Urbana Farmers Market that I'm sure y'all want all that money to go to. So it's really important that we think about these things and it intersects back into defunding the police because our police budget has a lot of money in it, a lot. And anyway, I'll stop there because it's a lot to think about and I'm really tired and obviously kind of shaky. So I'm going to end there and thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, so now there are two more. Is there anyone else before I continue that would like to speak? Please raise your hand now so that I can we can judge. Thank you. Okay, Justin Hendricks.
Hello. All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Justin Michael Hendricks. I am a Champagne, Urbana resident, Parkland College student, creative hidden homeboy and state advocate. I begin with saying, we watch black men, women and children be killed unjustly in the daylight from streets to churches with video surveillance. We have witnessed white men and women execute premeditated and unlawful actions against peaceful protesters. We now have to worry and wonder what will happen next. The history shows, so that the record reflect, with Julia Reitz's beating, bruising and belittling on the black community with each bang of her gavel, while benefiting off black and brown bodies at the bank. I already knew Julia Reitz's position when making her stance on fourteen one hundred WDWS, opting not to speak on racial disparities, even shortly after giving facts to her and the newscaster Brian Bonhardt herself, himself. When reading, I ask, who did she interview as none of the organizers or protesters were interviewed when she gave out her statement to send back to the city when no charges were met to the guy that drove through our crowd? Personally, Julia Reitz is no different than Glenn Long, Glenn Young, Colin Bruce, Jim Lewis, Aaron Schott, Tim Bruce, Tim Bass, and currently even Amy Corner Barrett. Let's focus on incorrect gun control by officers and your husband lost gun, or will that be another stated fact that bothers you and true? It was nice to see Diane at the Women's March. I hope you have that same support for Leah Lewis as she's a woman too. So make sure when you uplift women, you uplift her as well, because that's the mantra and mission that we have in the marches, as I'm, as I'm being told. That same support needs to be for underprivileged areas as rent to utilities, as black women are also a part of that cause as well. And I want to thank Alan for doing the work to making sure that we aren't having shut offs. I want to give a shout out to Tracy Chong for giving facts, also Drake for discussing what's needing to be done to implement hitting, heating in the city. Also Megan McDonald for giving such care and compassion to everyone. As Megan said, I'm very shaky. I'm kind of bothered with, speaking with everybody today. There's been a lot going on in the city and I just want to make sure that when we come to you all, we do come to you all with peace, but we are, we are bothered about what's going on in the city and there's a lot that's happening. And we want you guys to know that we do hear you, we do listen to you, but there's a time and a place where you guys have to come off of your pedestals and you have to start meeting us in, in places that make you uncomfortable. You are at a place where you have power and you're not using it. And when you're using it, it's not to the ability that benefits the people. And then you want to come around when it's election season or when we have the last minute calls to do the job and you already have deaths on your hands and you're going to have more deaths with winter because things are being taken care of. You have a food desert, children aren't eating. We, we already know, as Drake has stated, food insecurity is, is a big injustice for a lot of people. We have to fix those things. We have to make sure that children are being fed in their homes. We have to make sure that children are being cared for in their homes because you know domestic violence is very huge and child abuse as well. So that's women and children across the board. We have to make sure that our, our trans people are taken care of because at this time, they may not be getting the medical supplies that they need. We have to think beyond, beyond our positions in our city council buildings and get out here and do the work. It comes to a point in time where we get tired of talking every week, but we call here every week to try to stress to you all what is happening, what is happening. Yes, we understand things have to be passed. Yes, we understand things take time. But sometimes you just have to just say, I need to get out here and find out what's going on and let's do the work. Usually I read off script. I'm not reading off script today. I'm just giving it to you straight off my head. Because I feel like sometimes you just have to give it to you guys real and raw and that's what needs to be done. I need you guys to do the work. Also invest into the black communities by Black Shambana. Also, you need to pressure on communities that are doing work for black organizations to make sure that they're doing the right work for black communities and organizations so that there's not just a, a token white thing or token black thing, but also make sure we're doing community building. With that being said, y'all know what to do. Thank you. Take care. Bye bye.
Thank you very much, Justin. Next is Amina Payne.
Thanks, Shari. My name is Amina. I'm a dual resident of Melbourne, Australia, and in Ward Three of Urbana. Now, I just wanted to let you all know what's been happening, I guess, in Melbourne, just to give you guys some background. So we have had some of the strictest coronavirus lockdowns in the world, in Melbourne. So in July, we had about seven, over seven hundred cases, which is the same as the UK. Yesterday, in Victoria, the entire state, we recorded one new case, one. Yesterday in the UK, they recorded over fifteen thousand new cases of coronavirus. So, you know, like Justin was saying, you know, there is a lot of power that the government has. This lockdown, this is our second, you know, lockdown of stage four that has just been eased. And I'm not, I don't know what's right for the community, but what I'm saying is, is that I feel so protected here, like our government cares. All of our homeless population have been offered places and hotels to court, you know, for safety so they're not out on the street. So there is a lot that the government can do to protect its people. I also want to let you know that there is recently a publication by ProPublica that was put out stating that in the States for, for children, the deaths, the children that have died from coronavirus have all been black children, black and Hispanic children. So I think that that's also something to take into consideration. The other day Drake and I were invited to present with the U of I about policing practices in the community. So it's really lovely that, you know, the U of I is, is working with us to to address policing practices and activism. And I just think that there's such strength at the U of I, there's such strength with the local activist community. And I just feel that the government is, the leadership is not utilizing the strengths that are made available. I didn't write notes for today. I just wanted to know a couple of things. I wasn't planning on, on saying anything. I would still like to discuss youth arrests within the community. Again, the U of I has provided me with some great research that they have done that I would like to speak to. So I really do look forward to you all getting back to me about that opportunity. And that's all I'll have for today. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Amina. Okay, next is, and last is Eddie Pratt Jr. You, you're unmuted Eddie.
Okay, you can hear me clearly?
Yes, you, you've kind of got a little thing where you're coming in and out though, but.
Okay, as long as you can hear me. My name's Eddie Pratt Jr. I'm a member of the community. I'm the leader of the T U Human Rights Coalition. I just wanted to speak just on behalf of, you know, the homeless that I, I hope and I deal with on daily. And one of the problems in this, in this community that I'm constantly being reminded of when I, when I engage these people is that there is no real longevity minded solution for the homeless. I realize that government, local, state, federal always has, has had the power to end this. And especially during this time of COVID in which we know it's an airborne, you know, virus and these people are at risk. We have one, one, only one shelter in the area. And it only houses only, you know, a few dozen. In the registry, we have around a hundred and fifty. So between that difference, we are, we're looking at roughly maybe another hundred people who are on the street every day. These people are people just like me and you who may have different challenges, be it medically or mentally or both. And I just, I'm, I'm heartbroken thinking about it. And so one of the things that I've been trying to do is getting with as many people in the community as possible, getting with different companies and everything so that we can give them some type of real transitioning housing, housing outside of the shelter. You know, a way back, a way back to, to, you know, a sustained way of, you know, life. And it's my hope that this is something that's important to you guys as well. I stress that nobody is, is too far away from being in this position. Anything that we have today can be gone in the next minute. I'm a child from Detroit, Michigan, that grew up extremely poor in the midst of the crack epidemic, where it started. I've experienced being homeless as a child. I've experienced that as a teenager and even as a young adult. I am extremely familiar with the challenges that these people face on the day to day. Just the other day, while I was meeting with a comrade, a guy came up to the pantry in which I was standing by downtown. And he looked and he saw that there was nothing there that could really help him. He was barred from the, from the soup kitchen, he told me for a couple of days. He was hungry, hadn't eaten in two days. And he was diabetic. So, you know, I brought him something to eat and that's not me saying that as if you need to know, but I did so. And I couldn't help but to think that even though that I was able to be there to lend that aid in that moment, what about tomorrow? What about next week? Excuse me, getting a little choked up thinking about it. But I hope to God that you people decide to use this platform that you have to help those that's fortunate. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much, Eddie. Okay, I thank everybody for their input tonight. Thank you. Moving on with the agenda, we now have staff reports. Are there any staff reports tonight from anyone? Yes, there. You have to mute, unmute.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and introduce our new community engagement coordinator. I think all the council members have met Lamont Peppers, but he hasn't been introduced formally to the public yet, so I've asked him to just come and say a couple of, couple of words.
Okey doke. Where is, hold on.
And he's, he's a participant. So can you un?
There you go. Lamont? Connecting to audio. Are you there? Hello, Lamont?
Looks like he's not connected to audio right now.
Okay.
All right, maybe we can.
If he's on, is he on computer or phone?
He's on computer.
Maybe he should check his mute on his computer or. Maybe he should check his mute on his computer or. I'm gonna say, Lamont, if you would put the arrow at the top right of your square, you'll see something there. I don't know if you can hear me or not. There should be a menu that comes down.
Looks like he's having some difficulties. We can come back.
Okay. Lamont, we'll come back to you. Is that okay? I guess it'll have to be. Jason, can you hear him at all?
No, I can't hear him, but I have his cell phone, so I'm working on some troubleshooting. So we can come back to him shortly.
Okay.
You can, you can go ahead and move on with the agenda.
Okay. So next on our, on the agenda is number six, which is resolution number twenty twenty dash ten dash zero four nine R. Resolution setting as official policy, the vision zero goal of reducing loss of life or serious injury to zero on our transportation system by twenty thirty. And we have, um, council member Brown. Would you like to address this?
Sure. Uh, thanks. Good evening, council. Um, sorry about my video earlier. I was having some technical problems. But I figured out that all you have to do is unplug the USB and plug it back in and fix it. So, yeah, on your agenda tonight, we have a VPAC recommendation on Vision Zero. Also here tonight is Cynthia Hoyle, um, one of the members of our, um, VPAC Vision Zero Subcommittee. If we could make her a, a panelist as well. Um, she, she will be able to try, provide some updates and, um, answer questions too. So, um, hopefully you had a chance to review some of the material from, uh, I think it was January or February, we presented this. Um, and the recommendation at the time from council was to go ahead and bring forward a resolution um, that council could adopt to officially become a Vision Zero community eventually, implementing the Vision Zero steps to become a community. If, if you remember, Vision Zero is a strategy and a systematic way to, um, reduce deaths and serious injuries, uh, from, due to traffic among all, all road users and ensure safe, healthy, equitable, equitable mobility for all. And we, we, uh, explained why it was, uh, zero. You might remember watching a couple of short videos explaining why, trying to set a goal above zero, just, uh, it's, it's, uh, hard to do. You can't, you, you really, no, no doubts are acceptable when, when they're preventable. So, um, I think if Cynthia's, is Cynthia with, with us yet? Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, can you provide a little bit of update? Um, I know we did apply for some, uh, A grant through the community, re, community, U of I community, C O R E, if you know what it stands for. That one didn't get funded, but there is some activity going at the U of I and we plan to work very closely with the Vision Zero group there. So Cynthia, do you want to add kind of an update on what's been happening since then?
Yes, I, I sent an email earlier today with a copy of the proposal that Audrey Ishu put together, uh, for us. We applied through the Community Learning Lab on campus to get some student interns to help us get started on, uh, some of the, uh, public input and engagement and communication strategies. And we now have an intern I'll be, uh, connecting with tomorrow who's interested in working with us. I've, uh, worked with the, uh, interns on a number of projects, most particularly Safe Routes to Parks. And they have, uh, done excellent, uh, work and been a, a fabulous resource. There is also, the Community Learning Lab sent out a, um, request for projects for a communications class. And it particularly worked well for what our project is. So I sent the project proposal, uh, that was put together, uh, to them so that we're hoping next semester, we have a group of students, uh, working on this and help us develop a full-fledged, uh, outreach, uh, and engagement, uh, plan. As you know, that's a large part of this. Uh, what, if the council passes this resolution, uh, we will then be able to apply for grant funding. It's difficult to successfully apply for funding if the city hasn't committed itself to the program yet. So, uh, once that's in place, we'll have a, um, better opportunity. Uh, there are a variety of grants around that we can begin, uh, applying for. I've also engaged, uh, Julie Pride at CU Public Health because the, um, safety of our roadways is a major public health issue. Uh, the number of people killed is unacceptably high. And the number of people injured, seriously injured is even higher than that. So, uh, that's something I'm hoping we can, uh, work more collaboratively with, uh, public health and the group Healthy Champaign County, uh, to move this forward. They're in the process of doing the Community Health Plan update. It's done every three years now. And, um, I am working with development of goals on that. In fact, we have a meeting this week of the, uh, Active Living Group to flesh those goals out. Vision Zero will be part of that as well.
Thank you, Cynthia. Also, I just, uh, wanted to emphasize that Vision Zero is a strategy that's been implemented worldwide in a lot of different cities. In the US, it looks like they're up to forty-four, at my last count, of Vision Zero cities. Um, and how they, you, you go through the steps and apply for this. And it's more than just like a, a stamp of approval. It's actually a, a strategy that's been proven, um, through data analysis to work. So if we implement the steps correctly and follow the, um, strategy, we, we're pretty sure to get good results. And, uh, I'll just go through the list. There's like four parts to that. Uh, Vision Zero City meets the following minimum standards. One sets clear goal of eliminating traffic fatalities and serious and severe injuries. Two, mayor has publicly officially committed to Vision Zero. And in this case, uh, council passing the resolution would fulfill that, any, the corporate entity or mayor. Three, Vision Zero plan or strategy is in place or mayor has committed to doing so in clear timeframe. And four, key city departments, including police, transportation, and public health are engaged. So Cynthia mentioned, um, public health has, has given us a letter of support there. They've been engaged in, uh, accident prevention and, um, preventing, um, prevent, yeah, reducing preventable deaths, um, for quite a while. And so they're definitely supportive. Uh, as part of this, um, initially, we're planning to probably have two or three meetings a year that would involve some participation from our city engineers and police department. So just as, as a warning, that's kind of the main investment at this point, I think. Does that sound right, Cynthia? Yep, she nodded. Um, so I think I had one minor correction or, or suggestion, um, the, in the, uh, in the wording of the ordinance, the mayor suggested, uh, asked me about the adopted more than thirty US cities. Uh, a lot more cities have, have, uh, adopted, um, goals of Vision Zero. But is, there's actually forty-four at this point that have, uh, implemented. So I, I'd suggest changing that to adopted to implemented to make it a little more, more clear. And we could change the thirty to forty or, or forty-four if you want. I think forty is, is a good round number. Are there any questions for either of us?
I'm supposed to ask that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm kidding, Bill.
That concludes my presentation.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Um, are there any questions for Bill or Cynthia? Mary Alice?
Um, thanks for all of your work. I know you guys have, I know that there are certain people on your committee that have been working towards this for years. So it's really nice to see it in this, um, form now. I had a question about the, uh, advisory commission that you're going to establish for the Vision Zero Task Force as proposed. Is that supposed to be for subcommittee? Is that supposed to be for the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, uh, members? Is that going to be other people within the community? How is that going to be formed?
I think what we've talked about is, um, using our, our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee time, two or three times a year to get together, um, a group that would be, uh, that would involve the wider community. So public health, um, and other people that we're starting to identify, definitely some people from the U of I. But basically using that time and using, uh, lending our staff support for that time, um, that would have been provided anyway for BPAC to these, uh, dedicated meetings of, of a Vision Zero Committee.
Okay, all right. So there's no like formal subcommittee that you're proposing to form here? It's just the current members plus invited people?
Yeah, it would be a, it would be a task force, but it would meet, um, during our BPAC time.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Are there any other questions for Cynthia or Bill? Okay, um, Carol?
I don't have, I don't think it's my place to ask questions, but I had some comments, um, just from the staff perspective, um, that, that Cynthia or Bill might want to respond to, um, if, if I could, if I could share those thoughts right now. And then, uh, Justin Swinford and Shannon Brannick are also on the, on, uh, the, in the meeting if they, if there were questions for staff. One of the things, first of all, I think this is great work and, and adopting, uh, a resolution like this is really important for the community. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity in the language of the resolution. You know, you, you talk about, um, that all of these, um, these deaths and serious injuries are preventable. But they're, they're preventable if, if, if the entire community, um, embraces this strategy. It's not entirely within the control of, um, governmental entities. And there's a really important educational piece to it, um, because of, you know, of, of awareness on the part of the community and, and the role that human error can play when we're not aware of, of the, these competing modes. And so, um, something that's more expansive that communicates to the public that they have a role in it, would I think provide us some, uh, as staff, some comfort that the, that the expectations are not entirely on the government. The other, another thing I wanted to share is, and, and, um, using the term Vision Zero strategy without anchoring it in something specific. So I don't know if it is, is literally what, what, um, Bill read in terms of what the Vision Zero Network, uh, requires in order to be designated as a Vision Zero community. But if it is some specific, um, recommendations as a strategy, anchoring that here would be really useful to us, um, because then we would know what, what the expectations are on everyone's part. And likewise on the, um, on the, the, um, the task force, if, if, if everything you articulated about what the expectations were could be included so that people understand exactly what the expectations are. Because we, we don't have, um, a dedicated budget for this, as you know. And, and, um, you know, this isn't going to be a standalone thing that will be, that we'll be able to staff. So maybe I'm just in general asking for more specifics.
Well, I think that that's the purpose of, uh, passing the resolution is to move forward with gathering some input and communicating with the public and developing a plan. We can't develop a plan until we have, uh, the stated support and leadership of the elected officials of the city. And so that is what we are seeking first. And no, the city cannot do this by itself. That's been clear and part of what we've been talking about from the beginning. But the elected officials can take leadership in saying, this is something we want to do. And then we will work forward from there. So at this point, it's just, we are just stating that this is what we would like to see happen. And now we are going to be in the work of how do we do that? And that's going to take, uh, some time and effort, which is why we are enlisting the help and support of public health and the resources of the university. I was in a focus group, uh, this evening that the university is working on Vision Zero. So we have, uh, resources in this community that we're going to be able to access. They've done some extensive public input with campus and I think we can use that and build on that in the community, uh, as well.
Okay, anyone, anyone else with comments, questions, or anything? So do I have a motion for the resolution?
I can make a motion, but I kind of figured that Bill might want to make the motion.
Oh, yeah, let me get back to my desk after the presentation. Okay. Um, yeah, I'll move to, um, send resolution number twenty twenty dash ten dash zero four nine R to city council with a recommendation for approval with the, um, change noted. And I may, I may, uh, bring some other minor changes to try to incorporate some of the language that Carol sort of, suggested about, um, making more clear that it, their, uh, traffic deaths are preventable. I think the Vision Zero, the way that said it was, um, traffic deaths are preventable. Division Zero integrates the human failing in the approach, um, using a systems approach. So if there's some way I can work some of that language in, um, I could try to do that, but, um, sorry, that became a long motion. Let me try that again. I'll move to send resolution number twenty twenty dash ten dash zero four nine R to city council with recommendation for approval with suggested changes.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved that the, the res, the resolution will be moved to, sent to city council with, uh, additional changes, uh, verbiage to make, to make it more specific for a recommendation of approval by Bill. And Mary Alice has seconded the motion. Am I correct? Yes, okay. Um, any discussion? Okay, with no discussion. Um, Ms. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoyle.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next. Yes, oh, yes.
Madam, madam chair, uh, Lamont Peppers has joined us and would, would you be able to give him a couple of minutes to speak now?
I certainly will. I saw that, uh, his, his wonderful smile. Where'd he go? There he is. Okay, Lamont, you're on.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and everyone who is present this evening. It is so glad to, though Zoom, meet everyone. As stated, my name is Lamont Peppers. I am the City of Urbana's U All's new community engagement coordinator.
Nice to meet you. Is there anything you want to, uh, you know, to address to the public and?
Well, you know, I, I think one of the big things is, pardon me, in the midst of the pandemic, there's always a concerted effort and concern pushed behind our youth, especially our youth of promise, formerly known as at-risk youth. We try to prefer, to refer to them as promised youth or youth of promise. We want to try to put a spin on some of the negative connotations. And so the Self-Made Kings Program, which was started as a collaboration in spring of twenty nineteen with the City of Urbana under Mayor Marlin, uh, then Community Relations Specialist Preston James, then, you know, Urbana High School Administrator Jorge Elvira, the community coalition, the UPD Department and the community as a whole. I became part of that as one of the co-coordinators. Upon, uh, Preston James' decision and move, I became lead coordinator. And then fortunately, I was hired as now your community engagement coordinator. So the program sits squarely in my lap to work with some of our youth who have problems of traumatized behaviors, socio-emotional conditions, socioeconomic conditions, racial barriers that they do not process as well as some of the rest of us, if I can just be transparent. And so I know that there is an amendment, uh, there is an amendment on board to amend the budget that we might increase the funding, that we can continue to provide the program and beyond just summer enrichment. You know, that we can work not just with the youth, but also with the families. I think sometimes we forget that parents and caretakers need support as well. And the City of Urbana has a tremendous amount of resources that they have allowed me to work with and learn about, that I am ready to help implement, you know, boots-to-the-ground work. So certainly I know that you all will be discussing that and I'm hoping for an approval. The mayor and I, we are just excited to get started to, uh, reclaim our youth, to reclaim our neighborhoods, not only just to reclaim our city, but to, as I said. not only just to reclaim our city, but to, as I said when I was interviewing, I believe and I know Urbana is ready to make the change instead of just talking about the change. And so I'm excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lamont. I look forward to seeing you more. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. The next agenda item is number seven, ordinance number 2019-08-040, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance omnibus text amendment number two, plan case number 2377-2-19. And this is community development, and who will be speaking on behalf of this?
I will be. Hi, and well, I'll be addressing 2384-T-19 as well, the next ordinance number. Both of them together, they kind of fell in together with each other last year. And so I'll just be talking about them both here, kind of like the memo. Let me share my screen. So really quickly, before we get started today, I just wanted to go over a couple of quick changes. Of course, as this goes out, we we noticed one thing on the type, the front page of each ordinance, that there was a whereas that was missing the word do, D-O. And it's right there in the middle of it, and it it kind of changes a little bit. It says, whereas the set of proposed changes have been identified since the last update, but on their own, do not warrant separate amendments. It has the not, doesn't have the do. So that's something that will be changed for the next ordinance. If the if committee chooses to send this to council, it'll be prepared properly. And then there's two other quick typos in here as well. There's a section in section five dash five, and I'll I'll show it to you a little bit later. But there's a reference to a section that's been withdrawn, so you don't have to make that reference number anymore. And then there's another one in the omnibus three, that ordinance number 2019-08-41. There's a section 11 dash two C, and the exhibits, the black lines, it's correct, but the ordinance has the the old language from previously. So I'll show you those when we get to them. I'm, these two cases, they haven't been presented in a while. Some of you are new. This was all from last summer, the last time council looked at it. And mostly small changes within the zoning ordinance. That's what the omnibus zoning text amendments are. So a few items have been reviewed for city staff to study a little bit further. And specifically, just to to refresh people's memories, the proposed changes to Article Five with a second principle structure in Article 11, you're not going to see those tonight just because those have been removed. Those are things that we want to study a little bit further and get a better handle on and take to you when we have a better presentation or more specific and thorough handling of those issues. So with that, I think my screen's frozen. So I'm going to stop share.
Okay, is that it?
No.
Oh, okay.
Really? Okay. Well, it's not going to look as good, but maybe I can do this outside of presentation mode. So I'm going to share my PowerPoint really fast. So this is, it looks like you can see the slides, but nope, it still doesn't let me change slides. All right, well, we're going to quickly go through these without a PowerPoint, if that's okay with everybody. So just follow along. The the articles here, the omnibus two, the first ordinance that's here is is showing nine articles, significantly larger than the third, and it covers definitions. We add a couple of definitions to to the the definition section, one of which is owner, which really greatly affects how we treat the the Article 12 historic preservation a little bit later in the zoning ordinance. And then the other one is specifying major variance and minor variance. And then added one about carports and we, just a little bit of clarifying language and garages. The second slide I just want to show you is, but Article Five, Article Five dash two, three, and five have all been withdrawn. So that's something that staff needs to study a little bit further. So the article changes at Article, Section Five dash 10. It's mostly a couple of minor typos, a reference change. Section six, there's again another development regulations. And in that, we talk about lot area and width in the MOR district. What has been withdrawn is a however, comma, in order to establish two principal structures on one lot, a conditional use permit must be approved by Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with the requirements of Section Five dash three dash dot C and Section Seven dash two. That's been kept in because we're not making that change. And then we have a change, a really quick change to a couple of footnotes on table six dash three. Section seven dash two, which is conditional use procedures. We added clarifying comments about just boilerplate language about who votes and in whether we recorded or not. We do record these. That's just a staff procedure that we're actually putting in the zoning ordinance. So everybody has the ability to look up how we handle these cases, which is what that section was for. Same thing with special use procedures. We added who can vote, all the person's language, the holding, all the person's then holding office vote. And then that the zoning administrator will notify the petitioner about the city council's decision. And then the clerk will record this ordinance. And that's again, something that we do currently, but we didn't have the language in the zoning ordinance earlier. And then we have a couple of typos in the footnotes of section, Article seven, so table seven dash one. Underneath sewage disposal plant, there were a couple of references to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So it's just kind of an older reference and more standard state statutory language. And then we get into Article eight. We just correct a couple of references, and we add language and figures for bicycle parking. This is something that was actually just a minor change that we said we were going to study and examine in the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan. So we have contacted the university. We got a couple of pretty good figures and drawings that are pretty reasonable and easy to work with. And we have included those drawings inside our Article eight. That changes a little bit for the standards for circular drives. So that reference has changed. In Article nine, we do talk a little bit about private drip, private traffic directional and instructional signs. Those are usually what you see at like, say, a Burger King or a fast food restaurant where you have a sign that points traffic and directs them to the right entrance. So they have a drive-through. We also talk a little bit about adding the ability for institutional freestanding signs, which is a definition or a sign ordinance for allowing them in B four central business zoning district. Past that, we have a couple of more references, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Just trying to clarify that for people. And then when we get into Article eleven, we talk about the zoning administrator, zoning board of appeals, and we we have boilerplate language for that about who votes on what. Article 12 historic preservation are many different references to owner in a property owner. And what does that mean? And there's four different definitions. So legal staff has long asked planning to adjust the zoning ordinance accordingly to have one definition of owner. It just makes it more clear, and we do that throughout the rest of the zoning ordinance. So we tried to pick a definition and actually put a definition in Article two. And then Article thirteen, we have a lot of special development provisions, and we changed some of the the language in there about who votes and really kind of tried to moderate modernize that boilerplate language for mobile homes, neighborhood conservation districts, and a couple other sections. For zoning ordinance omnibus three, it's much shorter. And in it, we had a couple of references to zoning districts that are no longer districts, and they're more like overlay areas, like the Boneyard Creek District. That's an overlay. It has special regulations and requirements, and it has even a board that it reports to for development, much like a lot of our other overlay districts, like MOR. We also had a reference to the Business Development and Redevelopment District. And that really kind of still lives in streetscape, but it doesn't really live in the zoning ordinance as much. So try to kind of pull that out so it lives in the right home in the City of Urbana. Same thing when you get into Article five, use regulations. We just tried to clarify the actual districts that are subject to special rules and procedures, and then what the reference is to that and where they live. We had an incorrect reference in our development regulations for outdoor lighting requirements. That reference was corrected. The Section eight and the location of parking facilities, we tried to correct some of the references there. Section five dash three dot G doesn't exist. So I think that probably was from when we had more sections. In nonconformities, we try to clarify things with adding commas because that's just how it's been referenced, but it's kind of hard to read if you don't have those commas in there. And we added or accessory parking area. And in Article eleven, if you remember correctly from last year, there was a edit to the Powers and Duties and Plan Commission and that was going to really refer back to city code where there's powers and duties to Plan Commission. That sense has been withdrawn, so there's no changes to that section whatsoever. And then Article thirteen just has a table of contents reference. So the Southeast Urbana Overlay District was added and the regulations were added, but then the table of contents didn't change. Very quick minor changes don't really warrant or necessitate a case of their own.
And that is it. Are there any questions for Lilly? Mary Alice?
Thanks, Lilly, for going through that page by page. It's a big packet. Double sided, I don't know how many pages this is. A hundred and six. So on Article six, development regulations, one of the things that was struck in Section D, so Section six hyphen three, lot area and width. One thing that was struck from that first sentence was and open space ratio.
Let me pull up that, that's in omnibus two.
Is it in omnibus two?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, sorry.
No, 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 you're great.
On page fifty-two, for anyone following along.
Oh, I don't even have page numbers. I'm using hard copy, Jared.
Um, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so that was a change, calculating the floor area ratio and open space ratio. I, that was a change that was recommended, I have to admit, by a different planner. And for, they had a rationale that was the two are interconnected and that it was redundant to have both. I wish I could go more into the math behind that. So that was something that this person had gone through a couple of MOR cases. And they said, well, you know, if you're calculating something on the floor area ratio, you're and I don't think that person is here tonight.
Want a little help, Lilly?
Yeah, that would be great.
So in essence, our calculation, the City of Urbana's way of calculating open space ratio is based on, rather than the lot size, it is based on the size of the building, how much area is in the building. So that throws a lot of people off. And now, Lilly, maybe this is where you can help me. So if you are calculating, for an MOR case, if you're calculating the building floor area ratio, you don't need to calculate the open space ratio because if the building gets bigger than your opens, if the building gets bigger than your open space required gets bigger. Why don't we write this up for you, though, and we can send it out after after the meeting? Because it is very technical, and maybe there's even a drawing that we could put together that would help explain this.
Okay, that would be great. I know that in the past, in some of the past cases, people have talked about the floor area ratio and the open space ratio. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't accidentally losing something by removing that. Okay.
Mary Alice, can you take the chair for a minute?
Absolutely. The chair recognizes Sharice.
Thank you. The question that I have, of course, and it's probably kind of, you know, not real important, but the word regulations, I guess, is an issue. And I was just, well, for me. And I was wondering if there's another way we can put regulations maybe as protections in certain contexts where it is actually for the protection of the citizen or for the protection of the water or the lawn instead of trying to regulate how how. And I'm and I'm just thinking in in general, not specifically, but like Article five, use regulations, you know, principle and accessory uses and structure, blah, 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 additional regulations in the MIC district, for example. I don't know if that could be changed to the using the word protections because what we're trying to do is to make sure that everyone is safe. Everyone is, you know, we're trying to do this in the the best, for the for the better, you know, set it for the better betterment of everything. And is that an issue, Lori? I don't know.
Well, I guess I'll give you the the zoning 101 quick lesson.
Thank you.
So zoning, by its very nature, is designed to protect the safety, welfare, welfare, health, and morals. Did I get all of them, Lilly?
Comfort and general welfare.
So, yeah. So there's several things that are, that's that's what zoning is based on. And that's right up front and in the front of the zoning ordinance and probably even in the state enabling ordinances. So really, that's that's the heart of zoning. That's the purpose of zoning. I think it's already in there, and and to make a word change like that would probably be hours of staff time, to be honest with you. It sounds minor, but it takes a lot.
No, no, I'm not, I know that I know that it would take a lot because it's how many years of zoning regulations, you know? I mean, how many hundreds of years possible, you know, decades? But and I and and I just, you know, people get all caught up in the word regulations. I understand them to not be regulations as much as they are protections, is how I look at it.
Well, the other thing to keep in mind is that typically after a community redoes a comprehensive plan, they really get into the zoning ordinance and, you know, it could be a a simple, some simple additions, or it could be a complete rewrite. I think that would be an opportunity really to pivot, to really think about how you how you display this information. That might be a really good time to have that discussion.
Okay, all right. I just thought I'd ask that question.
Do you like the chair back?
Yes, I would, please.
Go for it.
Thank you very much. Bill Brown?
Yeah, thanks, the on Section eight for parking inside yards. We're changing it from, they can park inside yards behind the back part of the building to behind the front part of the building. Is that right? So you could park right next to the house, but you wouldn't have to go clear behind the house.
Yeah, the others, and that's kind of recognizing what the most common practice is for a lot of people and just kind of right sizing that.
And also, there's an environmental benefit of that. It doesn't require one to pave an extra 20 feet, let's say, of driveway just so that you park farther back in your yard.
Yeah, probably for residential, it's not a big thing. I mean, for single family, it's not a big thing, but maybe apartment buildings in some cases I could see in in some areas where that, I can understand why they might have said farther back. I could see in some areas where that, I can understand why they might have said farther back. I think in some areas, they were trying to get parking away from the street more or something. Have we had any any requests for variances on that? Have we passed them? Do you know the history of that at all?
I don't know of any variances asked for for parking in the front. I do know that if we have an attached garage, you can have parking that's right in line with the face of the house. As a matter of fact, some people will even put parking your attached garage farther. So it's also kind of matching what attached garage is, you.
I would also add that enforcing this part of the ordinance is pretty close to impossible. Because yes, if someone were to park alongside the house in violation of the ordinance, we give them a warning, then we give them a ticket, and then it's, we're going out every day in order to correct something. Because it is so pervasive, I don't know if, that anyone knows that that is the rule, that you're not supposed to do that. So there hasn't been variances sought, because nobody knows to seek a variance.
Okay, I mean, there's certain number of front yard parking spaces allowed, right? Per, per single family resident or whatever. And so if they're parking by the house now, it's probably just being counted as front yard parking. You can have a couple of spaces or something. Is that right?
So parking in the front yard, it gets complicated because of our definition of access drive, which normal people call driveways. Zoning ordinance calls them access drives. So if it, if, and Lilly, correct me, we have spent hours talking about this. So I'm going to try to distill all of our conversations into thirty seconds. So the idea is, if you have a garage on your lot, you have an access drive to that garage, an access is parking. So if somebody happens to park in your driveway there in front of your garage, as long as you're not over the sidewalk, then that's fine. Did I get that right Lilly?
Yes.
Okay, the problem is, if you don't have a garage, you technically cannot put your car in that same space. Because there's no garage, therefore it is not accessing anything.
Which you can imagine that it's kind of a penalty to smaller houses on smaller lots, which is oftentimes found in historic areas, where maybe the garage was there once when it was built, and it's fallen down since, hasn't been replaced. So it gets really tricky.
Okay.
Okay. And then on the bicycle parking, those drawings are recommendations right there. It's, you don't have to use those loop parking things, but it's suggested, recommended practice, and I mean, there's some that we don't want, like that wave one. But there's also other creative things you can do for parking, it's just.
Yeah, absolutely. So you can't install new wave lot, new wave racks or ladder racks, for instance, the comb racks. And that's a different separate graphic that's already existing in our zoning ordinance, so it wasn't included in the text amendment. We do require the U-loop, but there's a lot of different creative ways that you can, in shapes that that can take. So there's a little bit in there. The, also, the new figures that are added are based off of APBP design standards, and allow just enough room for not installing that bike parking space right up against a wall of a building, or blocking an access aisle because the rear wheel overhangs on the sidewalk. That helps on the enforcement, and just gives people a clear direction to go when they're trying to design a building.
Okay, yeah, I think the one right behind the city building outside the back door is probably not conforming. On the signage for the drive-throughs, eating that restriction, allowing a little bit more flexibility in signage, will that help at all? The problem around Jimmy John's at five points, you know, by, I mean, that is ridiculous. At lunchtime, you have cars in line out on Broadway Avenue. Will the signage help them figure out a better circulation pattern for that area?
That's really tough, because I think that that's their, you know, there's only two accesses into getting to that point to interfere the, and I think it's not, this doesn't really address the stacking length that's required for the Jimmy John's. But it may help with signage in the future for identifying that for people.
All right, thanks. I hope somebody's kind of looking at that problem.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, I was trying to find the specific four different references to property owners in the Historic Preservation section of the zoning ordinance. You said that there were like various definitions, and you were hoping to codify them to be a single definition. Can you explain a little bit about your thinking behind that?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is something that kind of came, was identified by legal staff, and Planning Division just kind of had this, that we wanted to change for a little while, but we needed a, it's a minor change. In general, the zoning ordinance refers to owners of property all the time, in every article, various times, and we just kind of say owner. And it's, the context is there as to what the owner is. In the Historic Preservation, there's several different owner definitions, and these are completely legitimate definitions of, I mean, different terms for ownership, but they're all different, and said they don't focus on, so one would be part, the owner of record. That's a great definition of owner, but also it's, you could just say owner, and it would mean the owner of record, depending on the context. The parcel, there's another, parcel owner. The parcel owner is the same thing as the owner in all the other articles. So that was one where, you know, we didn't necessarily need to have that for the other articles, and we wanted to make it a look and read a little bit more uniformly.
Does the does the definition of owner, is it so broad that it becomes also, not the owner also, but the the individual who's leasing a property? And therefore is occupying it?
Yeah, so in general, in the zoning ordinance, it does not talk about the person who has a leasehold over a property. So that's kind of up to the context of the situation, though. There is plenty of contexts where we'd love to know and get a hold of the leaseholder. There's a lot of times where we're required to get a hold of the property owner.
So so they're not being, so they're, so they're not being differentiated right now? Are we losing differentiation in that area? I just wonder.
Yeah, no, that's a really good question. It actually also kind of goes back to how we are able to get in contact with people. It's kind of required if you hold ownership of property, there's a public records for that. It's recorded with the county clerk, and it's easy for city staff to get a hold of that in contact information. But it's not required for you to record any leasehold. So at, at no point do you say, I am a renter of your property, do I say, take my lease, go down to the recorder's office, and I record that. And so then city staff has a really hard time getting a hold of leaseholds and leaseowners.
Just for clarification, so the owner, the definition of owner that we are proposing refers to the City Code, and it reads, a person having a legal or equitable interest in personal property or real property. So that would not be a tenant. That would be what we all would call an owner.
Right, and in the sense of multiple owners, is that, how does, how do you deal with multiple owners, i.e. a corporation?
Those are, no, Lori, please go.
Well, let's, we'd need to pull up the City Code, because the City Code talks about defining person, personal property and real property. So the City Code has already figured out how to address that issue, because it is not just the zoning ordinance that has references to owner, of course. That's in many, many areas of the City Code.
Okay, anyone else? Have any questions? Would anyone like to propose a motion? Put forth a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Jared.
I'm gonna move ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero eight dash zero four zero, and ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, Omnibus Text Amendment Number Two, from Plan Case Number twenty-three seventy-seven dash T dash nineteen, be sent to your city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bill. Is there any discussion?
And just to note that I think this is the one that we need to get a little more information on open space ratio to you all. So we recognize that we'll do that.
Okay, thanks Lori. Okay, so Ms. Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, moving on. Item nine.
Wait, wait, we need to, there were two ordinances that she presented.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead. So we need someone to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go for it, Jared.
Ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero eight dash zero four one, and ordinance amending Urbana zoning ordinance from Omnibus Text Amendment Number Three, from Plan Case Number twenty-three eighty-four dash T dash nineteen, be sent to full council with recommendation for approval.
And I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Mary Alice. Any discussion? Any questions? All right, Ms. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, now, now can I move on? Okay. Moving on to the next item, number nine, which is Resolution Number twenty twenty dash ten dash zero five zero R, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Economic Development Agreement, Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, FY twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And we have someone for communities, is it you, Stephanie?
Yes, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Tonight, I am seeking your approval on a resolution executing an agreement with the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation. The proposed agreement follows the same format as last year's agreement with no changes, and it covers activities from July first, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Previously, the city has contributed twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars to the EDC, which is the same amount which is budgeted for this year. The EDC provides another layer of services to the city's economic development strategy, as they focus on various initiatives such as site selection, workforce development, regional collaboration and promotion. They're also in constant contact with the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for dividing updates for all of us in Champaign County on programs, services, and grants. The EDC also hosts the Small Business Development Center, which is an invaluable resource to Urbana businesses, offering confident, free and confidential counseling, support, and tons of webinars. During twenty twenty, the EDC has been the glue that held together numerous organizations who have worked together to keep businesses open safely. Staff is recommending the approval of this resolution tonight. And we have Carly McCrory McKay, the Executive Director of the EDC, here with us to share an update with you all.
Okay, Carly, take it away.
Hi, thank you, Stephanie, for the introduction, and thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening. I am going to share my screen. Can everyone see that? Okay, excellent. So as Steph said, my name is Carly McCrory. I lead the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation here in Champaign County. So drawing your attention to just this first slide, I will recognize that every October, we celebrate manufacturers all throughout Champaign County as part of Illinois Manufacturing Month. So this is a new graphic that we just released ahead of October that features different products that are made here locally, including four companies recognized in Urbana, Flexing Gate, APL Engineer Material, APL Engineer Materials, Serionics, and also Dart Container Corporation with the famous red solo cup. So just an overall view of kind of who we are and what we do. We're a public-private partnership, so we work closely with all the municipalities throughout Champaign County, as well as the private sector and other partner agencies across the communities to advance the economic well-being of the communities. But we do that in a very, in a variety of ways, on very specific focus areas that are all listed here on the screen. The main ones being business outreach and industry engagement with workforce development components. As part of that, regional promotion and talent attraction, which also includes transportation logistics. And then also the small business development, which is the main focus of our Illinois Small Business Development Center that we host here in our office. Another big component of us is that we do a lot of regional collaborations, so not just across Champaign County, but really throughout East Central Illinois, and thus the state of Illinois as a whole. So as I mentioned, a really, a lot of what we do is focused on business outreach and industry engagement. That's kind of the bread and butter of every economic development corporation, which means that we're constantly communicating and working with existing businesses across the community, but also working to attract new businesses to the community. And we do this through a variety of ways, structured outreach visits, requests for proposals that come through our office in a variety of ways, either through the state of Illinois or working with site selectors. We do a whole host of roundtables each year, focused on different industry segments and making sure that resources are being shared, and we're, we're working collaboratively across the county to address some of the challenges, but also a lot of the opportunities as well. And then a big portion of what our office does is we focus on data. So we're constantly working to do data projects for local companies to help them understand the regional workforce, provide information on statistics, as well as wage reports and what to expect from the local workforce and throughout our region. And just calling some attention to some of the things that we've been focused on this past fiscal year. We, along with the university's Office of Corporate Relations, as well as the University of Illinois Research Park, launched a new coalition called DC Three that is meant to bring together defense companies throughout the area to work together and to identify opportunities together, but also to work to address some of the needs of the local defense community, which we do have a lot of companies located in the defense sector here throughout Champaign-Urbana. The other thing that we've been a big partner in and helping to co-lead some of the efforts is some of the initiatives that have been developed through the University of Illinois Chancellor's Economic Development Advisory Council, which I'll touch on here in a second. But one of the big projects that we undertook over the last fiscal year was working to identify different clusters throughout the Champaign-Urbana area that were prime for growth, and that we could work to attract not only companies, but talent too. So for the past six to nine months, with a small delay because of the pandemic, we have been working to conduct over eighty interviews with both the public and private sector, but a lot focused on the private sector for these six industry areas that are here on the screen. We are, we just wrapped up those interviews, and we're going to be releasing this report either later this year or very early in twenty twenty-one, which will include recommendations on which of these industries to really focus on moving forward through not only our agency, but the ones I mentioned that are partners on this as well. A key component of everything that we talk about and everything that we do with companies and that we hear about in every business outreach visit or every call we do is workforce. So we work very closely with a lot of workforce partners across the county to understand, develop, support, promote workforce development initiatives. And a lot of the ways that we do this is making sure that we're providing constant feedback to our workforce partners through these business outreach visits, and helping to understand what the opportunities and sometimes the challenges are here locally, and then working to address those. So whether that's talking to Parkland College about something we're hearing in the manufacturing sector from different companies, and working to build up a program like a new forklift training certificate, or if it's a long-term goal of something that we're seeing trending in a particular industry that we may want to set up an apprenticeship program about, those are the types of things that we tend to focus on. We may not always, as an agency, lead the efforts, but we're certainly working very closely with partners to support the efforts and provide feedback of what we're hearing from local companies. And oftentimes, that's done with the University of Illinois, Parkland College, our local Workforce Innovation Board, and/or other business associations throughout the county. One of the things that we do a lot of is regional promotion and talent attraction. So we're not just talking about available sites and buildings to companies all throughout the area, but we're also just talking about talent as well. So we do a variety of things, but one of the things that we've really stood up and focused on developing further this past fiscal year is this So we do a variety of things, but one of the things that we've really stood up and focused on developing further this past fiscal year is this Champagne County recruiters network. So this is local recruiters working in different industries across Champagne County and making sure that we had a connection set that we were talking to them on a regular basis, that they could talk to each other so that they could be successful in their own hiring efforts to attract new talent to Champagne County. So that is something that we've been focused on where we do a quick resume sharing, we create resources and we make sure that they have what they need to be successful in their own jobs. One of the reasons Champagne County is so attractive to companies is because of our transportation and logistics that we have here, whether that be interstate, rail or our University of Illinois Willard Airport. But I wanted to just call your attention to the airport because in the last fiscal year, we co-led a study that looked at the economic impact of Willard Airport. And this was really important because we had done this study previously in twenty-sixteen, which was the first time it was done. But now we had a comparative year-to-year look at the impact that the Willard Airport has had, especially since we've launched significant initiatives to focus on the growth and the development of the airport. So I, I preface this slide by saying this was, of course, pre-pandemic and the airline, and the airline industry has obviously changed dramatically. But this is really excellent information that we've used and will continue to use in our conversations with the airlines as we try to increase destination routes moving forward post-pandemic. Of course, we do a ton of programs and events. As I mentioned earlier, this is Illinois Manufacturing Month. So during October, we typically do a lot of in-person events at manufacturers, but we've, we've switched to virtual things. And with the Chancellor's Economic Development Council that I also mentioned earlier, one of the things that we've been co-leading is this idea around development in the ag tech sector in Champagne, Urbana. So obviously Champagne County compromises a lot of agriculture as part of the industry anyways, but we have a lot of tech here due to the University of Illinois and also Parkland College. And so we developed an entire new campaign this past year. We launched our first Champagne, Urbana Ag Tech Week. And it's one of the industries that we continue to see the most requests for, but also the most potential for growth as we not only have companies starting here in the ag tech space, but companies looking to come here to have the access to the resources that we have, like the farmers and also the grower networks in Champagne, Urbana. One of the things that we were really proud of to be able to partake in this past fiscal year was a pilot project with the Welcoming Economies Technical Assistance Program. This was a partnership that we collaborated on with the New American Welcome Center at the University YMCA. We are one of three communities across the country to be selected, along with Pittsburgh and Louisville. And we're just coming up on wrapping up this project, but it was really an expansion of the work that we've been doing to build a welcoming plan here in Champagne County. And this really focused on economic development and small business development. So we were happy to participate that and we'll be releasing the results of that soon. But these are the six key pathways that the New American Welcome Center focuses on, and we are participating quite heavily in the economic integration and employment sector. So again, one of our areas is small business development, and we're really proud to host an Illinois Small Business Development Center in our office. It's a state-funded center by the Illinois SBDC Network and also the U.S. Small Business Administration. And these are just some of the metrics from the last calendar year. They run a different calendar year than us because of the grant. But one of the things that is, it's more unique about our center compared to some of the other centers across the state is we have an international trade center component. So we have one person that is solely dedicated to helping companies export and import their products. And in twenty-nineteen, we helped increase exports here in Champagne County by twenty-two million. And we also helped local companies receive over seventy-four thousand dollars in grants to be able to build upon their sales overseas. So those are just some of the stats that we had from twenty-nineteen. And these are some of the Urbana metrics specific for Urbana companies to date just for the year twenty-twenty. And a little bit of a breakdown of each of those of who we see and who we help. And this is more so within the formalized process of active clients, which is currently sixty, that our SBDC meets with on a regular basis. So these services are free and confidential. They can schedule appointments via Zoom or phone calls. But this is really critical, especially during the pandemic, of helping businesses get through. And then in the past three years since October of twenty-seventeen, we've advised over nine-hundred-and-fifty businesses in Urbana. So like I mentioned earlier, we, we do our best to recognize as much as possible. And just some of the recent things that we've been able to do in the city of Urbana is we were very excited to announce with the SBA's Illinois Office that the Best of Africa's Food Store was chosen as the Illinois Family-Owned Small Business of the Year, which we celebrated in middle September. In the middle of August, we hosted Governor Pritzker and the community to announce some grant recipients in the Champagne, Urbana area for their state program titled BIG. And these were round one recipients, of which Wooden Hog was one of them. So we were able to showcase that business and host a press conference here in the community. And then soon we'll be releasing a video for Illinois Manufacturing Month of Serionics, which is a really excellent homegrown success story. That was a spin out of the university, graduated from the University of Illinois Research Park and is now located in Urbana where they are manufacturing their filters. And they're just released face masks as well. Some of the other big things, initiatives that we've been focused on is working to finalize our new strategic plan that'll take us through twenty-twenty-three. So these are some of the highlights, but they all fall within the focus areas that I mentioned previously. Our Board of Directors tentatively approved this plan last month. We made a few minor adjustments and we're going to be approving the plan actually this Wednesday, just here in a few days, and then we will release it publicly. But it focuses on a lot of efforts around identifying career pathways, deploying more resources for small business development to support women and minority entrepreneurs, especially with access to capital and a lot of other things as well. So obviously, you know, a lot of our day-to-day activities shifted and we restrategized when the pandemic hit in March. But one of the critical things that we did right away was set up a group of economic development leaders across the county, including the city of Urbana, on weekly Zoom calls to address some of the critical challenges and the things that were happening. And this was not only important for us just to be able to talk about what was going on, but we wanted to be very diligent and coordinated in our efforts around messaging. There was, there's constantly a lot of information being shared and we wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page and working together. And this group has been really critical in why this, we've had the success that we've had here specifically in Champagne County throughout the pandemic of decision-making and coordinated efforts amongst the communities as well as communication to the businesses as well. We've also, of course, provided a lot of technical assistance to the businesses throughout the pandemic focused on helping them with federal and state grants, doing webinars, one-on-one consultations, assistance with applications for everything. So this has really been a, a big focus of us and the collaboration has been really, really key with these twenty-plus agencies that are active participants in this group. At that group led to the development of champagnecountysafe.org, which is a website for local businesses to access resources. And this was launched in May and we're constantly adding new materials and resources based on the needs of not only the community from a public health point of view, but also to, to help our businesses. So we've done everything from create and distribute posters to businesses throughout Champagne County to creating the safety pledge, to videos on reminding people how to appropriately go to bars and restaurants and what dining etiquette is appropriate. And this will be a big focus as we continue throughout the pandemic as well. Of course, we've got our graphics and as many places around town as we can and driving people to that site so they know where the resources exist and what businesses have taken the same safe Champagne County Safe pledge. But again, I want to give a shout out to our partner agencies that we've worked with throughout this pandemic because that has been what has really set us apart as far as working together and making critical change happen on a very quick basis, which has really been key as we've navigated the pandemic. So our Small Business Development Center, you know, has upcat all of the, the normal things that they do on a regular basis, but we've adjusted, obviously, in some very COVID-specific work. So and just looking at kind of our formal structure, and these are self-reported numbers that are also lagging a little bit in time. But we've worked with two-hundred-and-eighteen clients for disaster-related purposes throughout COVID, supporting over thirteen-hundred full-time jobs and almost seven-hundred part-time jobs. And we've done a hundred fifty-five webinars since the pandemic started. So we're doing anywhere from two to five webinars per week on the different topics that are being asked and required and requested by the business community. And then we've also helped clients directly through technical assistance receive over two million dollars in funding either through the SBA's PPP program, the Payment Protection Program, or the IDLE program. And that's really critical and quite a big number because a lot of the PPP loans that people received were fifty thousand dollars or less. So, which is why the SBA just changed their application form for that amount. So we're really proud of the work that our team has done throughout the pandemic, specific to small business relief. So some of the things that are happening now, I mentioned that Governor Pritzker was here earlier in August to announce big round one grant recipients. But right now, we're right in the middle of big round two. So we're doing a significant amount of outreach to the business community, webinars and technical assistance for the second round of that particular program and encouraging them to apply, especially as we come up on winter months and as other programs like the PPP program run out. We also are taking advantage of all the notice of funding opportunities that we can to get direct assistance to businesses in our area. So one example is the Economic Support Program, which municipalities were eligible to apply for. So what typically happens here, if our organization isn't able to apply for a direct program, we would work closely with our municipalities to develop the program by providing feedback of what we're hearing from businesses, kind of the do's and don'ts of what we've learned through providing technical assistance for the other programs. So this will be something that will continue throughout the pandemic and even beyond the pandemic, both from the state level and the federal level as well. Another area that we've been working on probably more so behind the scenes is working on communication strategy, strategies and advocacy strategies on Region Six as defined in the Restore Illinois Plan by the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Governor's Office. So working to make or encourage that they include Champagne County's data minus the University of Illinois testing results, which we did see that change last week. And then really lately, just working with other counties throughout Region Six to avoid mitigation efforts so that our business community isn't immediately impacted by these rising numbers. And obviously, I think everyone has known today that there was a significant amount of cases and the press, daily press conferences reinstated. So this will be something that we work very closely with our partners on moving forward. And then another exciting thing is our SBDC received an additional grant through the CARES Act for direct funding to provide assistance to businesses through third-party consultation. So that's everything from accounting and financial compliance to photography to setting up e-commerce stores. That will be rolling out here over the next few weeks because our grant agreement was, executed grant agreement was sent to us on Friday and we'll be standing up fifty to twenty new programs directly available to small businesses at no cost to them between now and early twenty-twenty-one. And then, of course, a lot of our focus and attention now and in the many months to come will be on recovery planning and implementation. And the things that we can be doing here in our own community to, to help assist those that need it, the businesses and the individuals have been negatively impacted by the pandemic. So the way that we're making these decisions and trying to plan out as best as possible is utilizing the information that we have available from direct feedback from businesses through surveys that we've conducted or some of our community partners have conducted, and also just looking at the raw data. So always keeping a pulse on unemployment numbers and the job analytics. And I just want to provide an example here on the screen of something, this is just one of a hundred things that we're looking at on a regular basis of understanding the occupation trend throughout Champagne, Urbana. So this graph here represents the top posted occupations online through March, March through September. So this was end of September. So this information helps us to better understand and confirm what we're hearing from businesses, how we should plan and develop workforce training programs, what we should expect to see as we move closer towards the end of the pandemic and what we need to be prepared for, for retraining. All of those types of things are things that we take into consideration and will be planning for as we move forward. And that'll be really critical to maintaining the economic viability of the local economy. So those are a few brief updates about what we've been working on and what we have planned, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Mary Alice.
Thank you for that, that great presentation that you gave us today. I wanted to know a bit more about your workforce development. Specifically, you had mentioned working with Parkland and the University of Illinois. Do you ever go into the high schools and talk to the counselors in the high schools?
Yes, we typically do that through an agency, Education for Employment Number three thirty, and particularly their Early College and Career Academy class. So I do things like I'm a guest speaker sometime and, and talking with the counselors. Other times, we help local counselors through the EFE three thirty office, especially now arrange virtual tours or guest speakers in the classrooms to help them understand, you know, the job opportunities that exist in industries, but specifically to industries that we have in our community, and then try to lay out the pathway to help those kids and even some of the counselors to understand how you get there and some of the steps that you can take and just what's available locally. That also helps us identify some gaps too of what we need to focus on. And sometimes that's even been of just how we communicate to students and, and changing some of those methods as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Carly, I was just wondering, do you have any kind of training programs at all for kids that aren't college-bound? For example, kids that might become carpenters or electricians, HVAC, you know, people? Or are, do you have any, any kind of training programs in, in, in line for those, for those children?
Not specifically run out of our office. Those would typically, of course, rely on our partners like Parkland College or the unions and some of the apprenticeship opportunities are available. Kind of how we would partner there is work to make sure that we have the most updated and accurate information about those programs and then work to disseminate that through other outreach activities that we do. But that is definitely something that we're talking about in conjunction with Parkland College is creating those opportunities through their community education side of the college. That is the non-credit side of certificates, especially on the short-term certificate side that can be obtained if people choo- choose not to go for an associate's or a bachelor's degree. And not to speak on behalf of Parkland College, but they are working on obtaining a lot of those notice of funding opportunities that come through the Illinois Community College Board to address some of these things and create programs that are specific to some of the things that you asked about.
Okay. Dennis?
But yeah, my question is sort of similar. I'm interested in understanding how you promote or you integrate young, young individual, high school age people, students to enter the workforce. And I'm wondering about specifically the unions that we have here in town.
So a lot of that would rely on just conversations or partnerships that we have in, in working with some of the unions. But like I said before, it's, it's really done, at least some of our work, because we don't actually run these programs out of our office. We're often just a partner in promoting these things. That's typically done in just conversations with the Education for Employment three thirty and their programs like ECCA where we're going directly to the high schools. Or if anybody reaches out to us and asks us to promote some of the programs that they have specific through some of the apprenticeships that are available through the unions.
Yeah, I appreciate getting your slideshow. I think it's a good one. And I'd like to get information specifically about what you just talked about, your relationship with the Education for Employment three thirty and what exactly that group is.
Yes, I will send a PDF of my slides out to everyone this evening and also follow up with some more information about that.
Right, so that's Dennis Robertson, Word five. I'd like to get that information. Thank you very much.
Okay, Bill, you had a question?
Just a little bit on that, I think you said seven-point-three million from the CARES Act for, is that for direct assistance to businesses in response to the epidemic?
So the, the seven-point-three number is the amount that the SBA is, was awarded to the entire Illinois SBDC state.
I see, okay.
So we, we have forty-plus SBDC centers across the state. And once the state was awarded that amount, each center could then apply for a request of up to two-hundred thousand for their own center to then deploy resources in their area. We applied for the full amount of two-hundred thousand. We're awarded that. And that's the amount of services that we'll be rolling out here in the next few weeks and through the rest of the year.
So those, those services you'll be contracting, it's not for assistance to businesses? I mean, it's not direct payments to businesses? I mean, it's not direct payments to businesses?
No, it's not direct payments, grants or loans to businesses. It's us working with third parties to provide services. And the, the proposal that we put together was really based on what we were hearing from local businesses. So, for example, one of the areas that we really focused on was accounting and financial assistance to businesses through third-party services like accountants in our community because there is a lot of complicated rules and regulations related to receiving some of the state and the federal funding that they have, especially if businesses have gotten more than one of those programs. So, making sure that, you know, we were including some of the most critical measures, especially as we come up on reporting deadlines for applications and forms, not only to local lenders, but back to those state or federal programs and agencies as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
Stephanie?
I was just gonna let you know, Carly and the SBDC brought to our attention a notice for funding through the state of Illinois and guided me through applying for a half a million dollar grant that we hope will be awarded this Friday that we can roll out. And those funds will go direct to businesses, reimbursing them for costs they've spent above and beyond their regular business expenses to prepare for COVID and safety. So, hopefully, I'll be bringing that to you within the next two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions for Carly or Stephanie? Diane? Unmute. I do the same thing.
This isn't a question, but it is a comment. I, I can't say enough about how helpful the EDC has been over the past year. And on a regular basis, they complement, they supplement, they expand our own city's, you know, economic development efforts. They support and help entrepreneurs who are starting new businesses through the Small Business Development Center Counseling and, you know, 100 other things. But during COVID, the leadership of the EDC in, and working with all of us to act in a coordinated fashion in response to the pandemic and, and really helping, you know, really, we can leverage their expertise in helping our businesses here in Urbana. And I, and last week, last couple of weeks, our efforts on behalf of Region Six in order to get Champaign County numbers added back into the positivity rate calculations. Most of that work went on behind the scenes, but EDC was an integral part of that. And, and, you know, the, the decision of the Department of Public Health last week to allow Champaign County numbers to be added back in was, we couldn't have done it without EDC's leadership. So, I really want to thank Carly for everything, everything that they've done over the past, past six months. And it's a tiny staff. It's just amazing.
Okay, so can I hear a motion regarding resolution? Did I mess up? Jared, do you have something?
I just said I would, I would make the motion.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I'll move Resolution Number 2020-10-050R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement that Champaign County Economic Development Corporation for FY 2021 be sent to the full council with recommendation for approval.
I'd like to second that then.
Thank you. Jared moved to, for it to move to council and Dennis seconded. Is there any discussion? Jared?
Not that I think that this is a, gonna be a controversial vote to spend this money to support the EDC, but just from my own personal experience managing a small business here locally that I cannot tell you how advantageous it is to have folks like that here and how disadvantageous it is for communities that do not have folks like the EDC and the SBDC to help them out. They were extremely helpful and a big shout out Carly, of course, to Don for all of his, all of the webinars the two of you have done to help small businesses figure out PPP and idle and all that stuff. So, you know, just, not that I feel like it's controversial, but just one other council member, members to know from firsthand experience that these guys have done a phenomenal job helping out small businesses who've reached out to them and even found ones that weren't.
Thank you, Jared. Mary Alice, did you have something? Okay, so there's no further discussion? Ms. Clark, would you call the roll please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, Mom.
Thank you. Okay, moving on for our next item is item number 10. This is one of the things that's been changed, Ordinance Number 2020-10-057, an ordinance amending certain Urbana City Code sections to reflect changes in laws governing cannabis and cannabis paraphernalia use and possession. Dash legal, legal, that's who's?
I'll, I'll, I'll start it and then I, I'll just introduce it by saying that these are a series of amendments that will conform our ordinances to state law as it relates to cannabis and cannabis paraphernalia. And Kurt Borman's on the line. He might want to say another few words about it, but, so I'll ask Kurt if he wants to say anything.
Kurt? Where'd he go?
He might be the phone number.
Yes.
I think it's, I think it's, it's self-explanatory. This is just as a, as a result of a, of a change in state law.
Yeah.
So that it conforms to state law now.
Okay, so are, are there any questions for Kurt or Mary Alice?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. A lot of this is just referencing the existing act that we now have on cannabis. My question really was about nuisance, and I know this wasn't the purpose of this amendment, but the aggravated public nuisance talks about the number of violations for different items. And I wanted to know the intersection between landlords, leases and tenants. So, if there is a tenant of, let's take something that's not, a tenant that has methamphetamine, we'll use that as an example, and the city's been out there twice. Does the landlord then have to kick that person out of the apartment? How does that work?
Okay, I'm just looking at that now. Well, the, the ordinance prohibits an owner from recklessly knowingly or negligently allowing or permitting aggravated public nuisance or allowing it to exist on the real property. So, the issue would be whether that person was, was aware of that situation. And before we can really do anything, we would, we would send notice to the owner of the, of the property. And we would give a series, we would give a written notice explaining what the situation was. And we would ask that person to, to come to the city. Well, guess with COVID, we wouldn't do that, but we would have a, we would have a conference with that person to discuss the situation.
So, is it legal for a landlord, if they've been notified once, to tell, to tell their tenants that they're no longer allowed to live in that unit? Is that legal?
Well, usually, leases have provisions to talk about that prohibit criminal activity.
I'm just, I, I, I just don't know if we're putting landlords in any kind of legal liability unless they have that language in their lease. Does the city have any kind of language that landlords can use that would, would adhere to those rules?
I would, I would say that that would, I can't answer that one because I think that, that's really a housing issue. I can't say for sure.
All right, so I guess I can follow up with community development on that.
Is there anyone like right now here with community development? Eh, I don't see anybody that could answer that question. That's a good question though. Anyone else have any questions? Bill? Brown?
Yeah, just as a little background, I think one of the reasons that the city passed this initially was that the police would have another option. Rather than filing the criminal charges for possession of marijuana, they could file a violation with a fine instead of criminal charges. And with the new cannabis legislation, I've noticed that there's a new criminal charge being filed for illegal transportation of marijuana that we didn't have before because any possession was illegal. So, you didn't have to, I guess, define that transportation by itself was illegal. So, the question I asked a month or two ago, when I heard that this was gonna be addressed, would, was, do we want to or could we make that illegal transportation of marijuana also a city ordinance violation so that police officers would have the choice of, of writing a ticket on the ordinance that would just result in a fine rather than filing a criminal charge, which would result in misdemeanor and court charges and everything else? I, I don't see that addressed in this package of fixes. Did anybody take a look at that?
Hey, Bill?
Okay, Brian.
So, I, I have a little bit of information on this. I first wanted, real quickly, with regards to the aggravated public nuisance, that was more an issue with regards to not necessarily Mary Alice to try to get a problem tenant out, was, but was to hold problem landlords accountable. And I, I am not an expert in the aggravated public nuisance, but that's generally how that was, has been utilized in the past. So, when there was trying to quantify in some fashion, repeat issues, repeat problems that would come up at a particular apartment complex, and that was the leverage to get the landlord to come to the table to try and problem solve these issues. That's how the aggravated public nuisance has worked in the past. And I believe it's only been used a couple of times with regards to that issue. Regarding Bill's question on illegal transportation of cannabis, when, Bill, when you first asked this question, that was back in the middle of September, I guess a little over a month ago. At that point, that incident code had been used. So, that was, I guess, eight and a half months through the year. That incident code had been used 22 times. And in those 22 times, it had been cited as a, as 15 times where it was, I guess, charged. And seven times, it had either been administratively closed or a warning had been issued or it was pending review as part of a bigger, more complex case. So, it was charged, I guess, 68% of the time by the officer in the field. I am not aware of there being any sort of movement by city legal that, to try to draft a similar ordinance within the city code. So, I guess that's the, the best I can offer you tonight.
Okay, what are the options if, I mean, if, if it's obvious that someone, i- if you smell burnt cannabis when you stop somebody, there's other options, aren't there, to, to do, is there field testing now? I mean, obviously, we don't, we want to be able to prosecute that. Do they have to use this illegal transportation charge in order to get to some of that? Or what would you do in that case if you smelled burnt cannabis when you stopped somebody?
So, having attended a recent state's attorney's training on, very brief with regards to the odor of cannabis emanating from the vehicle, an officer can't obviously smell, whether it's 30 grams, so it's legal, or it's more than 30 grams, so it's illegal. The advice that we've been given by the state's attorney's offices at that point, it is still then, then the officer can't. The presumption is that it's, it is illegal. Truthfully, there, there are a lot of rules around how it has to be packaged as well. And there's different rules. I could not tell you all of them tonight. But there are rules with regards to minimizing the odor escaping and, and whatnot. So, with regards to what the officers would do specifically, they can use this particular state tool. We don't have a, necessarily a city tool that they've used, so that, that's what they've done, I guess, thus far. The best I can, I guess, tell you tonight.
Okay, maybe this, maybe we'll have to save this for another discussion, but I just wanted to make sure council was aware that we did have that ordinance in place in order to give officers an option and, and probably, I mean, I think in the past, we've looked at the disparities and it was one of the ways we had to address disparate treatment or disparate outcomes from similar charges. Imagine, you know, if somebody buys cannabis now, they get it in a, some kind of odor-proof package that, and that's the way you're supposed to transport it in a car. But if you buy it on the street, you don't get it in that, and that would be apparently, you can't tell from looking at the cannabis whether they bought it on the street or bought it in a shop legally. So, maybe that's the only way they can address that. But it does seem like, in a way, people that can afford to buy it legally once and then buy illegally afterwards could just use that same packet. So, there might be some disparity issues there. And I don't know, maybe there's something we should look at as far as, you know, if there's, if we need to do something, provide an ordinance to provide another option rather than criminal charges. I guess, you know, it just depends how it's being used and how serious it is. I guess what I was asking before though, I was really more concerned with addressing the kind of a DUI issue. If you actually smell that it's been smoked in the car rather than just the raw cannabis itself, which you apparently can smell. But if it's, if it's suspected that they were smoking while driving or something like that, are there, is there a field sobriety test basically for cannabis or some other tests that they can administer to get that issue?
So, I guess very quickly with regards to DUI, the, in times past, the, any amount was considered under the influence. Now, there's, they're quant, they're doing a, they, the lab, I guess, or can quantify to some degree. I will tell you that the, the, the direction to the officers is to do a qualitative test. In other words, do field sobriety type testing and those types of issues, or those types of tests to, to deal with that. I know that there are companies who are racing to try to come up with some sort of preliminary field test. We do not have any of those here at, at Urbana.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? Jared?
Not a question from what was in there. I seem pretty cut and dry for the most part that we're just amending to update our ordinances to reflect the changes in law with things that were formerly illegal, not being legal anymore and thus updating or stuff to do that. But Bill, I would certainly support looking into drafting a similar ordinance to amend our code to give us another avenue for dealing with that transportation issue until the state makes it more clear how exactly that's going to be regulated because it wasn't really clear in the law and it's still not very clear from all of my readings of how they're trying to get people to deal with it. And, you know, ultimately, it may come down to that the state is gonna, you know, redefine the act again in the next legislative session. They'll probably update it again, I imagine, because there's a number of things that are like that. But I would certainly support doing something here locally to give folks an option, as we've done in the past with possession. So, just want to make that comment.
Yeah, Brian?
Just one more thing. Having at least opened up in the ARMS database, which we'll hear more about in a minute, all of, all of these incident codes were part of numerous incident codes. It was never the only thing that was a part of the event. So, I just think that needs to be at least part of the discussion.
Okay. Well, do we have a motion at least to put on the table for discussion? Jared?
Since I'm on a roll, I'll make the motion that we- Since I'm on a roll, I'll make the motion that we send ordinance number 2020-10-057, an ordinance amending certain Urbana city code sections to reflect changes in laws governing cannabis and cannabis paraphernalia use and possession, be sent to the full council for recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion? Nobody? Okay, we have no discussion going, can we move for a motion, please? Move for a vote, a roll call? Start?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, which is number 11, resolution number 2020-10-051R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement, records management system, and that's UPD. Brian, you got the floor?
Actually, I'm going to take the lead on this one, this is a group effort.
Okay, Carol.
And Brian and Sanford are standing by to answer technical questions, but I thought it actually might be easier if you heard this from a layperson. So, this is, there's two pieces to this, the part that is in the ordinance has to do, the ordinance that you just read, has to do with approving an intergovernmental agreement for a new public safety records management system, and then there's a budgetary aspect to it, which I will speak to, but that comes in the next, that comes in the ordinance for the budget amendment, which is why we rearranged the agenda. So, our, our public safety records management system is currently known as ARMS, which stands for area-wide records management system, and it has served us for almost 40 years. It started life as a Urbana-exclusive database, affectionately known as CUDS, the City of Urbana Digital Database Law Enforcement System, and it's now been expanded to be five jurisdictions, and it's governed by a policy board. And the policy board has been discussing for a couple of years now how to move forward with a new system, because ARMS is really, its life is coming to an end for a variety of reasons. So, these are all outlined in the memo, so I'll just give the highlights, there's multiple reasons why we really need a replacement, and one is the hardware that the system runs on, which is a mainframe, that it will no longer be supported in 2022, and a mainframe replacement would cost $50,000. But when you couple with that with the fact that ARMS is written in an outdated programming language, and that it's very difficult to find people who are skilled in that language, that's another aspect of it. But then finally, you know, the expectations for what the system can do have expanded, and the integration with other public safety systems is becoming more and more important, and the ability to do analytics with the data calls for rethinking the capacity and the options that are available through this system. So, you see outlined on the second page of the memo, you know, some of the highlights of how we've progressed the replacement effort for the records management system, and one thing I really want to point out is that, you know, our staff, who maintain ARMS and are supported by a budget that the partners contribute to, that we really put in some serious effort, and Tim Smith deserves a lot of credit for this, to do some advanced work that basically was a down payment on qualifying for this DOJ grant that we got, and that serves all of our partners. So, that's over $400,000 in grant money that will make this a much more affordable system than we originally contemplated, and I just, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that our IT staff worked really hard to make that happen. So, there's a few highlights of what the intergovernmental agreement contains in terms of moving forward. So, there's a policy board, and there's a policy board for ARMS right now, but this board would have two representatives from each of the parties, and the initial group will be the same group that's part of the ARMS agreement, but it's contemplated that other jurisdictions may be added. Champaign, because they have the most sworn officers, and they are also the lead agency on MetCAD, will take over the lead agency role from Urbana in the new intergovernmental agreement, and as I mentioned, the members will be those same five members who we have now. And then, once the group is formed, and they are seated, I guess, the initial annual budget will be approved. So, there's a summary there as well of the cost to replace ARMS as we understand it now. So, there's an implementation cost from Tyler Technologies, and that, and there's a need to move ahead in a timely manner, because the quote from Tyler Technologies expires at the end of this year, and the grant money needs to be spent in two years, so we've built up to a sense of some urgency around this. So, the implementation costs in total are a little over $800,000. Then there are estimates of what the new records management system operating costs are, we don't expect the first year to be a full year, so we expect that that would be around $70,000 for the first year, but the annual operating cost of about $230,000, and our portion of that would be around $42,000. And then during this implementation period, you have to run both systems simultaneously while you're ramping up the new system, the old system has to remain functional, and there's a cost associated with that. So, what we're looking for in this item is approval of the intergovernmental agreement, and then in the next item, as one of the pieces of the budget amendment, you'll see that there's a budget request for our share of the new public safety records management system of $102,536. So, with that summary, as I said, Brian and Sanford are available to answer your technical questions.
Anybody have questions?
I have a question, Grace. Okay, so, I'm, I understand that we're switching gears here in terms of who the lead agency is from Urbana, that's been running ARMS for 40 years, to Champaign. Of course, Urbana will have to continue to maintain ARMS for a time period, but once we basically decommission ARMS completely, what does that mean for our IT staff, since we have somebody right now who is in charge of that?
You want to answer that?
Well, yeah, I'll respond. We have one, I mean, really, it's one person is dedicated full-time to ARMS, so it's, the only impact would be that one person. You know, first of all, it's probably about 18 months or longer before we're done with that, and, you know, we would seek to find another role, because as Carol mentioned earlier, Tim is a really wonderful employee, and he's done great work. But at the same time, you know, when he was hired as the ARMS programmer in 2018, we were very clear with him about the timeline for the system, that, you know, he was coming on, even at that time, we were seeking to replace it. So, this is not going to be a surprise, and it's still a couple of years away from, you know, any final decisions.
So, right now, as I mull through all of these numbers, it seems to me like the DOJ grant will cover about half the cost approximately of the implementation of the new system. And then, so our annual basically cut of what it would cost, is that $70,000, or is that just the first year? Is it $42,000?
Yeah, the best number I would put out there, it's on page six of the PDF, I don't really have printed page numbers, I apologize for that, but it, the page six breaks the cost split down by agency. And Urbana comes near the bottom of the page, and it shows our cost in future years. It will, by the fiscal year 2324, it levels out to $42,000. So, I think from an ongoing basis, that would be our portion of the ongoing costs of the new system.
And was it $24,000 that we're currently spending, is that right?
Brian, that, you're the one, you referenced that number more recently.
Yes, that's what it was this past year, it had ramped up a little bit before then, then that had to do with, I think, hiring a couple, when we had to do, when one was retiring and training the new guy, and so it had been, so essentially, mid to upper twenties is what we were at, and 42 would be the new number for this particular program, for this, I guess, product. I will say that there were Elizabeth Pannon, and then her counterpart in Champaign, passed numbers back and forth, and I think this is, of course, their best guess at this point, hoping to come out of this on the other side. So, this is just to give us, I don't know if this is 100% guaranteed with regards to the numbers, and I don't know if Sanford can clarify that at all.
Right, I think, you know, the future cost of the system is two parts, one is software maintenance, which is relatively predictable, the other one is staff time, and at this point, you know, moving forward, they don't really know what the full-time staffing level the system's going to require, will it require one full-time person, would it require half a person? So, what they have done for the, to estimate this out, I think, and they took a good approach, they assume that the person is going to be split across multiple roles, or serving the same role for multiple systems at MetCAD, and then they also estimated, well, it's, you know, in IT these days, it's not really a one-person job, you need different skillsets. So, they added in some part-time of a couple of different roles to create the ongoing support costs. And it's an estimate, and, you know, those are the details that are going to be worked out over the next two years, but I think their methodology is sound.
Is there, so MetCAD, the lead agency in MetCAD is Champaign as well, is that right?
Yes.
There, is this ever going to be rolled into MetCAD, just as like a service?
It can't be rolled into MetCAD, because it's sort of, the money for 911 has to be kept separate from this money. It will be, I believe at MetCAD, it will be tracked in a separate fund, much in the same way that we track ARMS now. But at the same time, the goal is to house it at MetCAD, make use of the facilities there, the connectivity that different police agencies already have to MetCAD, just on a lot of levels, they have the right infrastructure in place to make this a success.
Okay, all right. Those are my questions for now, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Bill? Bob Brown?
Yep, so, I know our accounting system is Tyler Technology, and the county has a lot of Tyler Technology stuff, so it sounds like everybody's kind of going that direction, and this has been quite a while in the, in the process, and you've been looking at it for a while. Were there any other contenders? I mean, was it, did you evaluate other systems besides the Tyler Technology system?
I've been evaluating systems since about 2017, so I've looked into several different systems. You know, they, we actually released, so, you know, if you kind of read into some of the memo, you see the history of the efforts we went through. We worked with the group from the Gee School of Business, the Illinois Business Consultants, and we went through a requirements analysis definition, they proceeded to compare that to some of the vendors, we had discussions, but, you know, we actually, this did not go through the sort of regular procurement process, because in this case, because as you referenced, the county had already made the decision to go with Tyler jail system, and then MetCAD already made the decision to go with Tyler CAD system, the 911 dispatch, working with those other systems, you know, we nestled right in between them with this new RMS, and you, you know, if you brought any other vendor in, you would not have that level of integration between different systems from the same vendor that you do. So, you know, needless to say, there are other good systems out there, but in this case, the ease of making everything work together outweighs, you know, potentially some of the benefits of other systems.
Okay. Yeah, I hope our pension fund invested in Tyler Tech 20 years ago, but maybe not. I did see something about hardware purchase for license plate readers that would work with this system, so I have to ask.
Those aren't license plate readers, sorry, just, I've seen.
Oh, they're license readers.
Driver's license readers.
Oh, good.
When the officer takes somebody's license currently, you know, they hold it up and they type, you know, they type in their computer, with a driver's license reader, you just swipe it, and then all the information goes forward. So, it's just an easier way for the officers, it's safer, it's less errors, everything else.
Okay, thanks.
Not a license plate reader, that's a different story.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion? From anyone?
Yeah, I'll do that. I move that we forward resolution 2020-10-051R, a resolution, international agreement concerning the records management system ARMS, forward to the city council with approval.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Dennis moved for this to go forward to city council. Bill seconded. Any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number 12, which is ordinance number 2020-10-056, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number three, omnibus finance department, and who's here for finance? Mr. Ho. Okay, there you go. Woo! All right.
Yeah. So, so, good evening. Before you tonight is the third budget amendment for the fiscal year 21. We have quite a few items on this list, but the majority of these are fairly routine items. So, first, we have some rebudgets that are in this budget amendment, so some purchases and projects that were not completed in FY '20 will be carried over to FY '21. Most of the rebudgets are in the general fund, we have a fee on the police special fund, one in the verb, and one in the parking fund. And then, next, we have some transfer from personnel line to services line to pay for temporary employees due to some vacancies that we have. So, the city code requires a budget amendment anytime there's a transfer between a personnel line and a service line. Since the address transfers, there's no impact on the budget. And then next, we have a few grants, most of these grants are grants that we have received in the past, fairly small amount. The newest and the biggest one here is the Cures Grant that we received from the state. City council accept that, approved that grant a few weeks ago. The grant is about $1.7 million, and will be used to reimburse expenditures in the fiscal year 21 budget, and this will increase, it has a significant impact, it will increase the fund balance of the general fund by a decent amount by the end of the year. Let's see, another thing I'd like to point out is that most of these grants have been approved by city council, except for the Illinois American Water Grant for the fire department, the grant is $1,000. The fire department is working on the resolution, and I believe that it will be presented. The fire department is working on the resolution and I believe that it will be presented to the city council next week. And then, and then we have some new one-time expenditures in the general fund. The first one is, the first one is the implementation cost for the records management system that we just discussed. The cost is about $140,000. The second one is related to the Human Relations Office. So because of the increase in appeals of police complaints, an additional $10,000 is needed to accommodate that increase. Historically, we have not heard more than one appeal a year. So this year, so far, we have received appeals on more than 50 complaints. And then, Limon mentioned this a little bit earlier. So another thousand dollars will, will go to community engagement activities. So part of that money will, I believe, will be made to the Self-Made Kings Program, which support at-risk youth in Urbana schools. And then the last piece is, the last piece will be in the mayor's office, and that will be the comprehensive plan website update. And that will be around $8,400. And then the rest of the items are really just minor items that are, that are not in the general fund. Yep. And then, so in terms of fiscal impact, these changes will not increase either recurring revenues or recurring expenditures in the general fund because these are just one-time expenditures. We don't expect, expect these to happen again in the future. And then ending fund balance will actually increase by 1.57 million dollars. And that's largely due to the Cures Grant. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
You have any questions for Don Ho? Bill? Unmute.
Oh, on, the, the hearing officer for the Human Relations Office. I think Carol might have mentioned in the past that a lot of those complaints, appeals could be combined. Has, has there been any progress on that? Or does it sound like we're going to have to? And how's that, who is the hearing officer that we have to hire? Is that somebody outside?
Yes. The hearing officer is an outside attorney. We're, we're going to have our first, in recent memory, in this recent batch of, of complaints and appeals, we're having our first hearing on Friday and we're, and we're going to try to get through six. And currently, we have 53 appeals. So, you know, we'll have to see how the pacing works and how the bundling works and so, so on. And they're not all, you know, all the complaints aren't, aren't created equal in terms of their complexity and so forth. But, you know, given the volume that's coming in, and I don't have any reason to think that the pace is going to change. We decided that we wanted to get another $10,000 in there so we'd be prepared. And, I mean, I hope we don't have to use it all, but I, I think we might.
Okay, thanks.
Mary Alice, I saw your hand up. Did you have a question?
Yeah, so we've been talking about the replacement of arms for a long time. And I can't remember. So it sounds to me like we didn't budget anything within this fiscal year. Is that correct?
Yes, that was correct. I think because at that time, we, we did not know the cost, the, any specific details of the cost or anything related to the new software.
Okay, all right. And then for the Community Engagement Officer, you said that some of the money would be made, would be used for the Self-Made Kings. Do you know how much out of the 10,000?
Approximately 6,000.
And so the other 4,000, were there already plans?
Just for general programming costs throughout the year.
Okay, all right. So does that mean that the Self-Made Kings is going to be throughout the entire academic year?
Yes.
And how many people do we currently have in the program?
I don't know offhand. COVID has had an impact on retention of some of the kids, but I, I can find out for you.
Okay, all right.
And the plan is to build it back up to what it was, which was, I think, around a dozen kids.
Okay. And then the Police Medical Services for about $7,000, I couldn't figure out what that was used for. Do you have any more information? Or maybe the chief is still here. Maybe he knows.
Yeah, I think Brian would have a better answer for that.
No idea at all.
Okay, well, it'd be good to know what that's going to be used for.
That's, I'm honest, I'm like, I sure hope Don knows how to, what the answer is, because this is not something that has come across my desk that I'm aware of, so.
Well, it's police patrol.
We can find that out for you.
Okay. Thanks for your honesty. I appreciate it. And then, so the police forfeiture programs, I know that those funds have to be used for very specific things. I don't know what those specific things are, but right now it's listed in other equipment and tools. Do you have any insight into those expenditures?
Yeah, I have to defer to Brian again.
So the special, yeah, so the special funds are, are funds that have gone through a forfeiture process where there's
Right.
the court hearings and things, and those have to be used for, with specific purposes in mind. So with regards to how they've exactly boxed that, those are the areas where we most routinely, where we most routinely will use those funds. And so I, without having an exact issue, I know that they've done certain things where we, they've had, they've tried to, things that would help for safety, like ballistic shields and other things. I know that we've, we've purchased in the, in the past with those kinds of things. So it sort of depends upon the need.
All right. Bill Colebrook?
I know a little bit about this. I used to run the program for the state police for about six years. So it all really kind of depends on the law that the, the item was forfeited, that the funds were then derived from. So if it's Cannabis Control Act, Controlled Substance Act, it has to be used for specific, for drug enforcement purposes. But if it's money laundering or Article 36 in this law enforcement purposes, so really you have to look at the source of the, of the seizure and forfeiture to find out what the, the end expenditure would be at the end.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think I checked up all of my questions. Any more questions for Don? Do I have a motion? I will move approval of ordinance number 2020-10-056. An ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number three, for recommendation for approval to city council.
Okay.
I'll second that then.
Dennis? I'm sorry, I'm writing. Any discussion? Okay, Diane?
I just want to highlight, one item on this list is the new city phone system. The phones have driven me nuts since the day I sat down at my desk. They're close to 25 years old, I believe. We can no longer, they can't even get support. And you may not know, but the Public Works Department's phones were updated maybe 10 years ago. And the city buildings were not. So our phones don't even really talk very well to each other. The pandemic and the need to have conference calls and remote working and everything has highlighted the age of our phone system. So this, this is going to put all city departments on the same system. It'll give us much more capability for communication. And not only during the pandemic, but going forward will give us more flexibility in how we work and how we communicate. And, oh my gosh, it'll be, it'll be wonderful. It's one of those outdated systems that, that we have struggled with for the last few years. And this is a great opportunity to finally fix it. So thank you for that.
Any more discussion or comment? Okay, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, item 13, moving on. I believe Alan, Jared, did you want to bring this forth? This is for resolution number 2020-10-052R. Resolution declaring continued utility disconnections in Illinois to be a pandemic safety risk. This is Jared, Jared Miller, Dennis Roberts, and I believe Alan Axelrod.
Sure, I'll just kick us off really quick. Let's see, Alan got made a panelist. He's going to share a screen and do a presentation to give a little more information. But we drafted this resolution to take some action where there has been none on the part of the governor's office to actually take real action to prevent utility shut-offs during the pandemic. And every action that municipalities can take to help spread that message matters and is incredibly important to doing so. I know that there was some question about the legality of the last part of the ordinance. And I know Alan's going to speak a little bit to that. And I have some further questions if it's still in question, and that would be section six of the, now therefore be resolved parts about drafting an ordinance on utility service protections. So, you know, and Dennis and I have talked about, you know, possibly remitting section three because we don't know if we need to include that because it's kind of covered in the whereas's. But anyway, I'll let Alan give his, his presentation and talk a little bit more about this, and then we can get into discussion.
Thank you, Alan. Go ahead.
I've never been a panelist on Zoom before. I am trying to figure out, is anyone able to help with that?
At the bottom, it says share screen at the bottom of the.
I missed the button.
Green button at the bottom.
All right.
You're kind of staticky.
Is my sound improved?
A little bit, but.
Okay, I'll connect a microphone and change my audio settings real quick.
Okay.
Can you hear me better now?
Oh, yes.
Oh, no.
Can you, can you hear you? There you go.
Sorry, it tries to take over my speaker. So now I can't hear you. One second.
Okay.
Could you repeat? Can you hear me better now?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, you sound much better. Thank you.
Okay. So this is a background presentation on the resolution 2020-10-052R. My name is Alan Max Axelrod, the campaign lead of No Ameren Shut-Offs. No Ameren Shut-Offs is a zero dollar. That is, there's no monetary influence on this group whatsoever. All volunteer grassroots campaigns spanning the state from Chicago to Carbondale. I want to thank, thank all the people who gave public comments. I didn't ask anybody to speak, and it was very encouraging to hear people express support for this resolution. With that, the sections of the presentation are pretty simple and straightforward. We have a pandemic health emergency. There is inadequate support. There's been bad faith operation documentedly of Ameren, Illinois, and legal powers are available to Urbana. So I'll do a brief overview of all of those. Admittedly, the last section is less cited because that's an ongoing discussion. So, first off, it is not a disputable fact that utilities are critically important for pandemic safety. A 2007 Congressional Research Service Analysis, excuse me, there's a typo there, I'll clean that up, is called Pandemic Influenza Analysis of State Preparedness and Response Plans. They included specific mention of utility service continuation. For example, a lot of downstate Illinois is derisively referred to as Northern Kentucky. Well, Southern Kentucky or Kentucky, as properly denoted, has mandatory utility protections by executive order through December 31st of this year. Our latest statewide unemployment rate is still over 200% of what it was for this same reported month of last year. We are at 30, whoop, excuse me, we are at 34 counties at a warning status in Illinois. That is literally one-third of all the counties in this state. That's the most that has been since the pandemic has started. Our seven-day average of new coronavirus cases is higher than California. We are only surpassed by Texas. And that is in terms of our new rate of growth of coronavirus cases. This past Friday, we saw our single highest day of 4,554 cases. And the daily caseload for the last, three of the four last days were all over 4,000. Today was over 3,000. That information only came out during the city council meeting. In terms of inadequate support, there's been an up to 49% increase in funds available for LIHEAP. The pre-pandemic LIHEAP was underfunded. Only 25% of eligible households were served by our LIHEAP program in, for the fiscal year 2019. That data only became available a month and a half ago. And I just want to point out how common knowledge the underfunding of LIHEAP is. I talked to Carol Ammons, state representative, last October during a SEJA discussion, that is, the Clean Energy Jobs Act discussion about LIHEAP and its need to be included. And her response basically amounted to, yes, I know that LIHEAP is underfunded. And I just want to point out that the level of households served for Illinois in 2019 was incredible because it was the highest since the fiscal year of 2014 in terms of the percentage of eligible households that were served. So it's not nearly enough, and it's been the best that it's ever been in a very long while. I'll get into more of why it's insufficient. As far as Ameren, Illinois' pandemic support, they offered $8 million in funding. It's up to $700 in support per household. We've seen, and I've posted online, several disconnect notices with past due balances in excess of $800, $900. And that's after some people have paid over $1,000 into their past due utility bill. The latest available information, some of which is provided by communications and some of which is provided by an testimony from an anonymous Ameren employee. They have served over 10,000 households that were in need of this funding. And that is, as we'll point out, just a drop in the bucket. They have spent over half their funding on that 10,000 household group, and it's not going to get better just by that. On top of that, from the anonymous Ameren employee, low-income residents are no longer served by this program. So if you were poor, if you earn under $2,127 a month pre-tax for a single-person household, they aren't going to give you any assistance. They're not going to give you any money. And this program now seems to only exist to help people who are earning between $2,000 and $3,700 monthly pre-tax for catching up on their bills. And here's the really startling number. Over 479,000 Ameren-served households are eligible for LIHEAP. That is from their own communications, as disclosed also in a legal complaint, in a legal filing that was published today. That is two times as many households as were served in fiscal year 2019 statewide, just Ameren. That is two times as many households as were served in fiscal year twenty nineteen statewide, just Ameren, Illinois. I also have numbers for Commonwealth Edison that were just released as well. One point six million households are eligible for LIHEAP right now. That's over two million households, that's over one in five households in this entire state. But Ameren by themselves accounts for nine point eight percent. So this is not something that's going to be solved by a forty nine percent increase to our LIHEAP funding. This is something that requires state and local intervention to protect our residents. Because we know that this is getting worse right now. Here's why. So, Ameren, Illinois agreed to a moratorium. It was voluntary, but they agreed to it. And here's what the moratorium basically boiled down to. LIHEAP eligible customers are going to be protected, is what it should have done. Yet, a hundred and fifty five recipients or of LIHEAP were disconnected in September. Two of which were actually nearby in six one eight oh two zip code, but there's two hundred forty five such. Sorry, there were two hundred forty five disconnections of any type of household in Champaign County just for September alone. We won't have the October numbers until November fifteenth. Also, verbalizing financial need by a phone call should be all that is needed to protect you from a shut off. In Alton, Illinois, a resident did exactly that, and they were shut off anyway. Just in the month of September, and it turns out only across twenty days, so not even the entire month. Six thousand five hundred forty three households were disconnected by Ameren alone. Over sixteen thousand households were disconnected by Ameren ComEd and all the other corporate utilities combined. Representing well over thirty five thousand households based off of the average household size of two point five four people per household. So this is affecting tens of thousands of people in Illinois. Is it any wonder that we are seeing an increase in our pandemic positivity rates? And number of counties at a warning level and the number of new coronavirus cases a day? I didn't have a lot of time to make this presentation, so I'm just going to also talk about the fact that West Virginia was maybe the most stark state. When it came to the impact of utility shut offs. After their moratorium expired, their coronavirus caseload per day tripled based off of their seven day running average. So this is not a niche issue, this is a significant issue. Now, the legal powers available to Urbana, while there is some dispute as to the efficacy of an ordinance. Here's the context for that conversation. One is that you can declare utility shut offs to be a pandemic safety risk. You can call on the governor to act through this resolution, and you can commit to draft an ordinance. And by that ordinance, you will be providing a mandate as well as time for legal staff. To be able to figure out the exact limits on the home rule government's ability to intervene on disconnections due to non-payment. For corporate utility served households. We know from Patrick Hayes's communication, which did not mention municipal utilities. That home rule municipalities, according to his advice, and he is the legal counsel for the Illinois Municipal League. Was that home rule governments have authority on disconnections due to non-payment. And I want to point out just how not rigorous a lot of corporate utility arguments are. The communication that was published today on the Illinois Commerce Commission's website. Is by another organization entirely separate from No Ameren Shutoffs. And I only just learned about them through this document. And that organization was responding to inaccuracies in the corporate utilities responses. Ameren, Illinois isn't the only utility that has shut off people who were supposed to be protected by this moratorium. Commonwealth Edison did too. Even though they serve almost twice as many households as Ameren, Illinois, they shut off just as many LIHEAP recipients. Who were supposed to be protected. So, I urge you to seriously consider acting on this resolution. And that will provide a mandate and the ability for legal counsel to fully vet the extent of the legal protection. So that we can do something to protect our increasingly vulnerable community.
Thank you, Alan. Before we move on, do we, do we, we need to pass a motion to extend the meeting time?
At ten thirty we do.
Okay, do, do we feel the need that we might have to extend it from right now, just for?
I can make a motion to extend it till ten forty five.
Okay, second, anybody?
I'll second it.
All right, so been passed by Mary Alice and seconded by Jared to extend the meeting till ten forty five. Are there any questions for Alan?
We have to vote on it, Sherry. We have to vote on it.
Oh, we had a vote on it, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Ms. Clark, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, continuing on, I'm sorry, are there any questions for Alan, Jared, or Dennis? Mary Alice.
Alan, do you have any numbers on water shut offs?
Zero for the month of September, and I want to point out how important that is. Illinois American Water had actually put out an email in August stating that in September, they would resume normal policies. That included the ability to shut off people's utilities. So it's very significant that they have had zero disconnections, as well as Aqua Illinois, zero disconnections. The fact of the matter is that LIHEAP never covered water utilities. And so it's very commendable that they've done this. But we have to look at the fact that this same policy that exists is affecting bad actors. Or is allowing bad actors in the electric and gas side to shut off people's utilities.
So for LIHEAP, can you give some background in terms of how does somebody apply? How does somebody get access to funds through LIHEAP? Do they have to submit some kind of form? Do they have to? What do they have to do?
Currently, at least for Champaign, I believe the situation is that you have to go into a local serving office. And there you actually engage in the application for LIHEAP. It is based off of your thirty day monetary income. So the idea here is that because there is over two million households eligible for LIHEAP. Based off of Commonwealth Edison's numbers and Ameren, Illinois's numbers, not even to mention Nycor and the other large utilities across the state. This shows that there is a huge need for these programs that are underfunded.
And to the best of your knowledge, are you aware of anybody in our region who have been, who have been denied access to LIHEAP funds?
As of yet, not that I'm aware of, because LIHEAP funding, as far as I know, has not been discontinued. However, it is based off of the thirty day income. So for example, if you got a higher paying job, which would be nice, you would not be eligible for LIHEAP. And you would have to do a deferred payment agreement with the utility corporations. However, we have to recognize that Urbana's not an island. And that cities like Danville had, what was it, well over two hundred, it was two hundred fourteen disconnections in the month of September as well. And if all of these people that are eligible for LIHEAP apply for it, we just simply won't have the funds. If we had twenty five percent of eligible households served at this point in time, that would completely deplete LIHEAP funding. We don't even have that much.
All right, I guess I, what I, what I'm trying to figure out is if there are funds available, are people being turned away from those funds? If they meet eligibility, and it sounds like at this time they're not.
Well, not in Champaign County. However, the anonymous Ameren employee actually did provide me information of the two most common calls that they were getting. Was one, people who were already disconnected, and so therefore were not protected by the moratorium as written. And two, people who were actually in a queue for weeks to speak to someone about LIHEAP. So it's Champaign, we're doing a lot better than a lot of other places, but of Champaign County, but not in the other areas of the state.
Okay, Diane?
LIHEAP is administered by the Regional Planning Commission, so people can have access to it at Brookins. And last I heard, there are funds available.
Okay, Dennis?
I was gonna say the same thing, because both Diane and I are representatives of the City of Urbana at the Regional Planning Commission. And we get monthly reports about LIHEAP funding. And yes, they manage it, and you could get more data about the number of people who are applying for it. And who have received it from the Regional Planning Commission offices.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments for Alan, Jared, or Dennis? Would anyone like to, oh, Jared?
Since we brought this forward, I'll go ahead and make a motion so council can discuss. I'll move resolution number twenty twenty dash ten dash zero five two R. A resolution declaring continued utility disconnections in Illinois to be a public, to be a pandemic safety risk. Be sent to the full council with recommendation for approval.
And I'd like to second that.
Okay. I have a question for whoever can answer it. Mary Alice, when you take the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair. Chair recognizes Sherry's.
Thank you. I think my question is. When we're with, with the COVID and everything, is, is this resolution? I know you want to move it into ordinance. So my, I guess my question is, how, what is the authority that we might have in, in, in doing that? Is, is there going to be any? Do we have any? Jared or Dennis, you could answer that.
I, I think we're, Sherry's, we're still looking into it. I know Jim had the opinion or the thing from Patrick Hayes, but I had a different reading of it. I think we need more time to, to figure it out. And, you know, in this resolution, we're committing, as it's written anyway, if we don't change the language. I mean, we're, we're committing to invest the time to do into it. We're not legally committing ourselves to anything, just to look into it. And if it turns out that there, you know, it just isn't something we can do, then all the other things that are in it. At least, you know, recognizing it and, you know, everything else is, is just language. There isn't a hard and fast commitment that we're getting ourselves into. We're just committing to draft an ordinance, and if it turns out that that doesn't end up being a thing we can do. And there is some easing language we can turn into section six as well. To make it less cumbersome, if that turns out, if, if it seems that way. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
Do you like the chair back, Sherry's?
Yes, I would, thank you.
All yours.
Okay, Bill Colebrook?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on section three and section six, but I'll, I'll do a section six first. You know, I read the same legal opinion that was provided to us, and, and I think it's really clear. You know, even though we are a home rule community, we do not operate a utility as, as a city. And, and I believe the, the legal opinion that's provided to us as a council is, we don't have power over them. I like documents to be clean, and with this section six in it, it's not clean. We can commit all we want to something, but if, if that commitment is going towards an ordinance that has no power. I don't think that section six should even be in the document. Having said that, I, you know, overall, you know, this is a, this is a concern for me. It's, it's, it's something that I deal with in, in, in my professional life. You know, trying to get, you know, students that, that, that have maybe been impacted by COVID. And, you know, it, it impacts their education because they don't have utilities. So I'm not against it, I just like a clean document. And having said that, section three almost looks like a circular argument. Section three doesn't even look like, you know, it's, it's just, to me, just frivolous language. I mean, I, I think that the document speaks for itself if the language in section three is just omitted.
Okay, Dennis?
Right, thanks, Bill, for commenting on those two sections. Jared and I have, have exchanged some discussion about that, and we both agreed that that section three can probably be, be omitted from this document. Because it's, it's kind of redundant to the first part of the document of the whereas's. And it's not really an, an action item in particular. Secondly, in section five, we are calling, the city council is calling upon the governor to enact a mandatory moratorium. Not a voluntary one. So it's a request. It's not that we're going to be doing it, but we're requesting the governor do it, to do it. And so section six, which discusses about whether we can draft such an ordinance or not, is kind of a moot thing, I think, for me. But I know that Mary Alice Wu, I understand, has offered some language that could replace text in that area. But the really important thing about this, and I appreciate Jared's, you know, bringing this forward so strongly. And Mr. Axelrod as well, is that by making this statement, at least it shows that our community is very concerned about. Community power shut offs in Champaign County, and certainly in our community, our city. And I think the governor needs to have this kind of feedback to move forward and make something more strongly effective for the entire state.
Okay, Diane?
I'll pass.
Okay, Jared?
And Bill, I take, I, I get what you're saying on section six. And, you know, just to reiterate, Dennis and I did agree that section three could probably be removed and the subsequent sections renumbered as appropriate. Mary Alice had given a suggestion, and I, as she says, is not a wordsmith. So I put some, some language to what she had suggested to kind of tone down that language. And give us a little bit more, some, something easier, so that we're not in a hard, such a hard commitment to that. If it turns out that that's not in our, our legal authority to do anything about. And that was, let me pull that back. So it says the city council commits to draft an ordinance. Well, we would say the city, instead of the city council, would say the City of Urbana. Will investigate all possible legal options available to prevent utility shut offs. And research other resources available and notify the city council and city or banner residents of their findings.
I like it. Good, good wordsmithing, Jared.
Thank you. So that was the alternative language that I would propose for section six. That, you know, I think, for one thing, I don't know, I meant to ask Sanford when he was in here, but I couldn't get the city's website to load. And I was, of course, now it's working. When I was trying to look this up a little bit earlier to look at our emergency ordinance. But I know that we essentially copied the emergency ordinance of the City of Champaign. And I know that in the City of Champaign's emergency ordinance, because I, I have that one up before, I wasn't able to pull up our emergency ordinance. That in their exhibit A in their section twelve thirty nine orders and regulations. Where they, you know, we did the same thing, and we listed a bunch of different things that we were giving the mayor to make executive orders about. Number, was it twenty six was require the continuation, termination, disconnection, or suspension. Keyworded our particular argument that we're making here was continuation of natural gas, electrical power, water, sewer communication, and other public utilities or infrastructure. And I'm pretty sure that same language is in our emergency ordinance. And Diane's shaking her head, maybe, maybe it's not.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't make that assumption. I don't have it in front of me either, but I don't think that's part of it. We, we did not essentially copy their emergency ordinance. That's what's much longer than ours.
Well, I, in any case, it's in theirs, and they passed it, which means that their legal department must have seen that. And said, well, we must have the ability to do so. All, all I'm getting at, Bill, is, you know, just that I think that there are a couple of other things we can look into. And perhaps we can get some more answers between now and next week. But at the very least, you know, we're just saying, hey, let's, let's look at this, and there's a couple more things. So if that language is, is a minimal to folks, I will offer an amendment to my original motion for those things, but we'll finish discussion first. But we'll finish discussion first.
Just real quick, Mary Alice, just hold on, Bill. Could you take the chair again, Mary Alice?
Yep, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Sherry's.
Thank you. Another question I have regarding this then is, did anyone contact or think to talk to Julie Pride regarding, you know, within the Public Health District, the Champaign, is it Champaign County Public Health? Anyway, to see if, like, you know, getting the Public Health Department behind this resolution would actually be helpful. Alan, did you do that?
Danielle Chenoweth, who is on the, I believe is the chair of the Board for CUPHD, actually spoke at the Illinois Commerce Commission on September 9th in support of the utility shut-off moratorium. But Julie Pride herself has not been specifically speaking out on this issue as of yet.
Well, has she even been contacted or asked for support or anything like that? Because I think that would be, you know, because the resolution is about health, you know, that it's a health issue. And I don't disagree with that. I mean, it does great for you to have water, but it doesn't do any good if it's not hot, you know, or capable of being heated outside of you going, you know, putting something on your fire in the backyard or something, or your barbecue. How, that's what, I guess that's what I... I think you might want to look into that. That's just a suggestion.
Well, yeah, point absolutely taken on that front. We've been very much a zero-dollar running gun.
I know.
But the Congressional Research Service's 2007 pandemic safety analysis also affirms that utility service continuation is a safety factor.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Okay. Hold on just a minute, Dennis. Mary Alice?
Would you like your chair back?
Yes, I would, thank you very much.
All yours.
Okay, Bill Colebrook had a question first.
I just may make a comment back to Jared. Yeah, I appreciate, you know, the, I guess, the response back to Section 6. I mean, I like the softer language. So that collaboration between Mary Alice as the originator and you as the wordsmith, getting that little bit softer language. Because what it does, it commits the city to investigate. It commits the city into looking into options as opposed to, you know, committing ourselves to doing the ordinance that I think is the dead industry. But, yeah, I like the softer language. I would support that.
Okay, and Dennis?
Yeah, as I recall, and this is from memory, when we were passing the smoking reduction ordinance way back when, when people were still smoking in bars and restaurants, that the township supervisor, the Champaign supervisor, and the head of the Health District are in our, the three directors who determine and agree upon a lot of the policy that is done through the Champaign County. And so I think that if Danielle gave a presentation before the CCHPC, and if she's one of the, if she's the head director for that triumvirate, I think that she would have the authority to speak with, you know, she could speak with authority about it.
Any other discussion? Okay, Jared?
I'm gonna offer an amendment. So the amendment would be to eliminate Section 3 in the therefore's and renumber the subsequent sections appropriately, and then to change the language in Section 6. And I don't know if the clerk got that, or Diane got that, or if anybody got that. Do you need me to read it again, Ms. Clerk, or can I email it to you?
If you email it to me, that would be best.
Okay, I will send an email to you with that softer language as.
Thank you.
Can you read it too, please?
Yes, so that was basically strike that section, and it would reread as, "The City of Urbana will investigate all possible legal options available to prevent utility shut-offs and other, or other resources available and notify the city council and City of Urbana residents of its findings."
I will second that.
Okay.
Mary Alice, you stole my thunder. I was gonna second it as well to show the collaboration between two ideological spectrums that Jared and I can work collaboratively together on important items like this. But I'll let you do the second.
Okay, so there is an amendment on the table, a motion to amend the resolution to the verbiage that Jared has added. It is moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Clark, will you call the roll for the amendment to the resolution?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Now...
Now we voted the original.
Now we go back to the resolution. It's been moved, it's been seconded, it's been discussed. Should we, are we ready to take a vote regarding... Do I need to say that the resolution with amendments, or?
Yeah, but Ms. Hersi, you need to have, someone needs to make the motion and second it because you didn't do that. You just went right into discussion.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so we need to make a motion for the...
I thought Jared moved and Dennis seconded it.
No, yeah, Jared moved for the resolution, Dennis seconded the resolution. But we have now a new amended resolution, I guess, is what we have to do.
Okay.
Is that what, so we have to make a motion?
No, we don't.
We don't have to make a motion?
We already made the motion. It's been amended. We've accepted the amendment. Now we just vote on the amended motion.
That's what I was getting ready to say.
Yeah.
So we don't need to move to, to, what I'm saying is that we don't have to make a move to, for the amended thing. We can just vote on it. Is that what you're saying, Dennis?
Now we're gonna vote on the amended resolution, which we just approved, the amendment.
Okay.
I think.
No new motions should be needed.
Okay, before I do that, Bill?
Yeah, just, I don't know if there's a lot of difference in the language, but I think the idea is to investigate what we can do, even if we can't institute our own moratorium. There might be something we could do with at least requiring documentation that all the steps have been taken as far as investigating alternative resources and payment plans and things like that, because there's a lot of laws that already require a lot of that. But it sounds like maybe people aren't getting the opportunities to do that. So there might be something we could do to at least require documentation of that before they shut it off, something like that. So I'm glad we'll continue to look into that.
Okay. Any more discussion before we vote on accepting the amended resolution? Okay, Ms. Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. Thanks, everybody, for your support on that.
And thank you, Alan, for all of your information. And I really appreciate that. And Jared and Dennis for collaborating with him to, with this resolution. Is there any more business before the council? Hey, well, seeing no more business, I guess we can adjourn.